Welcome to the Tempe City Council Work-Study Session at the Harry E. Mitchell Government Center. Today is Thursday, March 24, 2022. The time is now 4:17 PM. Members of the public who attend the meeting physically are asked to maintain distance between other parties, and masks are optional for all attendees per city of Tempe policy. Alternatively, members of the public may attend the meeting virtually through Cisco WebEx events by visiting tempe.gov/clerk for more information. Council meetings can also be watched in real time via Cox Cable Channel 11 and at tempe.gov/tempe11. Item number one, Mayor's announcements and City manager's announcements. I have one, and I'd like to see, Jason, if you'd be willing to join me down front? And actually, I'd love to see two, if the council could all join me down here as well. So I appreciate Jason coming up here and actually receiving this proclamation on behalf of the amazing, honorable Jenny Lloyd Norton. We have a proclamation for her, and I also want to thank Councilmember QB. I know you did a lot of work on this as well, and I know she's a close dear friend of yours and all of us standing up here today, and just wanted to acknowledge that and say thank you. So the proclamation goes like this. Whereas Jenny Lloyd Norton spent her early childhood Sunday afternoons playing with her Tempe cousins and their friends, after attending our university, she left South Phoenix and made Tempe her home. And whereas Jenny's heart was inspired by Tempe's diversity and the homogeneous neighborhoods, even with multiple parks set around the neighbors, Reverend Jenny has reverence for Tempe's indigenous and Mexican and rural beginnings. And whereas she also revered the college town atmosphere and the highly educated multicultural community, Jenny was joyous with Tempe's commitment to funding human services rather than relying solely on federal and state funding. In the last few years, Jenny established a stunning series of actions called the Feminine Black Indigenous BIPOC reparations, that's Black Indigenous people of color, that have widely impacted our community. And whereas Jenny immersed herself in the cause of human services for the betterment of our city, her tireless advocacy and support are seen and felt community-wide, from serving the only community action program of the city for over 50 years, to providing a respite trailer for our street neighbors, to helping ensure that more families have affordable housing options in Tempe. And whereas she was grateful for Tempe's inclusion of multiple residents to volunteer on policymaking boards and commissions, and personally served under four mayors during 24 years on a city board, volunteered alongside six mayors, and interacted with multiple council members during her time representing Tempe and Guadalupe as an Arizona legislator. And whereas Jenny Norton is a woman of the ages, a warrior for social, economic, racial, and environmental justice, who makes a tremendous difference not only in her community but across the region, the state of Arizona, the nation, and across the world. Now, therefore, I, Corey Woods, Mayor of the City of Tempe, Arizona, I know along with the entire city council, do hereby declare April 7, 2022, as Jenny Norton Day in Tempe, Arizona. [applause] that we have received several online comment cards. Actually, I should ask Mr. Ching, do you have any announcements first?
I actually do, thank you.
Ah-ha, see?
Member of the council. And I actually have slides, kind of a rare occasion here. I know. I'm surprising myself today. So next month, the Public Relations Society of America is holding their Western District Conference in Hawaii. I am told that the City of Tempe's Communication and Media Relations Team will not be in attendance in Honolulu, but they will learn whether or not the city has won the Best in the West Award for our ongoing weekly COVID-19 e-newsletter. Tempe is an automatic contender for the bigger award because we won the top award from the Phoenix chapter of the Public Relations Society of America back in October. Of all the winning Phoenix area communications efforts in the public and private sectors that were recognized, Tempe's COVID-19 e-newsletter was presented with the one and only judges award, and our entry scored 98 out of the possible 100 points. Every member of the Communications and Media Relations Team has contributed to the e-newsletter, which serves as a local communications lifeline during the pandemic. From graphic design and video, to photography and chasing down and writing great stories, everyone contributed. Staff has worked to keep the content fresh, accurate, and engaging. In addition to sharing the latest credible scientific information from federal, state, and county and local sources, our staff showcased local businesses working hard to stay afloat, city employees continuing to provide excellent service, neighbors caring for each other, and resources for people to get financial help. Excuse me. Data shows that subscribers consistently open these emails and clicked on their content at a far greater rate than national average for email marketing communications. These newsletter features did double and triple duty by also being used within social media posts, webpages, media pitches, ads, signs, and more. The publication was produced daily for months during the most intensive harrowing days of the pandemic, then it was done several times each week, and it continues to present day on a weekly basis, coming out each Monday afternoon. Community members can sign up at tempe.gov/eNews. Congratulations to our communications team, and good luck to them next week in the regional contest. Thank you.
Excellent.
Appreciate it, too.
All right. So we've received several online comment cards regarding the coyote's proposal. Please note that city council has not yet reviewed a proposal as the procurement process is currently underway, and council members cannot speculate on what votes may be or whether the proposal will be approved. Please note that state law prohibits council members from engaging with the public regarding matters not on the agenda for legal action. With that said, we're going to go on and move on to item number two, call to the audience. The city council welcomes public comment at this time for items listed under Section 3, Issue Review Session Items, and Section 5 Committee of the Whole Items on this work-study session agenda. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker. I've got a couple of cards here, and then I will turn to Carla right after for hers, but I want to make sure I take the people who are here first. The first card I received is from Amy Douglas. Please come forward and state your name and place of residence. You have up to three minutes to address the council.
Sure. Good afternoon. My name is Amy Douglas. I'm a resident of Chandler at 645 West Goldfinch Way. I'm here representing the Tempe Historic Preservation Foundation, and I came to update the council on efforts that the foundation is making to restore W. M. U. Cemetery to its historic appearance. Currently, unfortunately, the state of the cemetery is rather bleak. It's in a state of disrepair, and the desert landscaping has, over the years, largely died away, which leaves a very barren appearance, and not only not very attractive, but also not very inviting to visitors who come there. And in addition, particularly in the Pioneer section, a lot of the grave markers are broken or deteriorating and in need of repair and conservation. So the foundation was fortunate enough to get a donation that is going to fund a needs assessment for the cemetery in terms of what it would, well, what the current conditions are right now with regard to the desert landscaping and the markers in the Pioneer section, and then determine what needs to be done to address both aspects and what the costs will be. So we're working right now with Logan Simpson to do the needs assessment. Obviously, then, the issue is going to be raising the money in order to get the work done, and we're hoping that the city will work with us and be a partner to look at what needs to be done, determine the plan. You know, obviously, we'll all work with the relevant city department's staff in order to come up with a plan that's amenable to all, and then see about getting the funding to do so. So I'm hoping that you'll keep that in mind in terms of your budgeting, and we look to your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next card I have here is Darlene Justice. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence, and you have three minutes to address the city council.
Hi. My name is Darlene Justice. I live in Tempe, Arizona, and I'm just going to say that I strongly, strongly concur with Amy and the Tempe Historic Preservation Foundation. I think a lot of you went on a tour of the cemetery, and Peggy Maroney does a wonderful job, and she coordinated a lot of things and is really been one of the people to help bring this to the sunlight, that things need to be done there. So I just want to strongly support that. Okay, I'm going to change my hat to North Tempe Neighborhood Association. And you all know about flooding on Fillmore. We have a stormwater problem that is actually the number-one priority in Tempe to have it mitigated. It is on the five-year CIP. My understanding is Miracle County pays half of it, Tempe pays 25%, and Scottsdale pays the other 25% because it benefits both of our cities. It actually runs through both of our cities. And my understanding is that their five-year CIP does not match ours, and I want to really, really hope that this does not slip anymore. We've been very fortunate that people have not been flooded in the last couple of years, but we've had some really serious floods in the past, and we will again. We all know that it doesn't rain, it doesn't rain, and then bam, it's really bad. And I have additional pictures. The last time it came down behind the school, it used to be Supai, now it's Tonalea, the water went halfway up by the bus stop there on the school side, so that whole street filled up like crazy. So anyway, I would really appreciate it that we get Tempe or Scottsdale on board or come up with a plan that we keep this on schedule or move it up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Quick question, I guess I was going to ask maybe to Mark Day or Tom Dunzing. Can we reference which numbers on the CIP, the items that Ms. Justice was talking about just there, just so we can come back to them during the conversation?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mark Day, Municipal Budget Director. So in your, there's a project listing that's, and it is listed under the Storm Drain Program. It is the Roosevelt Storm Drain.
Perfect.
So it is funded by General Obligation Bonds, City of Scottsdale, and Flood Control Justice as Ms. Justice stated.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it, Mark.
What's the number, though? What's the line? Line number 11?
Oh, yes, please.
So I've been hearing about this since I've been on council, and I'm just wondering what we can do to move this up in the proposal and also to work with the City of Scottsdale to move them forward.
Okay. We definitely can talk about, we need to get through the rest of the public comment, and we'll definitely make sure to circle back, so.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. Carly, you have, that's all the cards I have. I think you have others?
The others have been rescheduled for April, so we are done.
Okay. Well, in that case, I'm going to turn these over to you before I lose them. All right. All right. Wonderful. So let's go ahead and go next on the agenda to item number three, Issue Review Session Items. The first item here is item 3A, Tempe Tourism Update. And I'm going to go ahead and look to, I see Sean Wagner here, our Deputy Community Services Director, and Michael Martin, who's the interim president and CEO of Tempe Tourism.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Sean Wagner, Deputy Community Services Director. I had the opportunity to just represent Keith Burke today. Unfortunately, he's able to join us, but it is my pleasure to welcome Michael Martin, interim president and CEO of the Tempe Tourism Office. The city and the Tempe Tourism Office have a longstanding relationship of providing services, tourism, and other types of activities throughout Tempe. The initiatives that Michael and his team undertake are actually woven into the social fabric of the Tempe community, and in doing so, they support all of the council's strategic priorities. So without further ado, Michael, the floor is yours.
Great. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present tonight. Next slide, please. For those in the audience who are not familiar with our organization, we are the Tempe Convention and Visitors Bureau. We do business as the Tempe Tourism Office. We were formed in 1988 to promote Tempe as a leisure and travel destination. Our office and visitor center is located at 222 South Mill Avenue, Suite 120 in downtown Tempe, and we have a staff of 12, and our Board of Directors currently sits at 16, although our bylaws allow up for 31. Our board is made up of representatives from the community, including the City of Tempe, Jennifer Adams, Councilmember Adams on our board, as well as Keith Burke, Community Services Director. We also have representatives from ASU, the Tempe Chamber of Commerce, Downtown Tempe Authority, and of course, the hospitality community. Our annual budget, oh, sorry. Our annual budget is comprised of three different sources versus City of Tempe bed tax. We do have a contract through the City of Tempe, and our funding is derived through that bed tax collection. Also, we receive funding through Prop 302, that is a countywide sales bed tax, actually. That was formed in 2000 to build the Cardinal Stadium in the West Valley, and some of those funds actually come back to the communities in forms of grants, so we use those for marketing purposes. The third is our advertising cooperative funds. We do sell advertising in things like our Visitor's Guide, our newsletters, that type of thing. So that's a third source of funding for us. Thank you. So tonight, I'm just going to cover three topics for you: the Tempe hotel industry, our marketing update, and organizational goals for the organization. So first, I want to point out the growth of hotel rooms in Tempe. We experienced a 12% total increase in hotel rooms over the course of two years. New hotels include the Hyatt House, Hyatt Place, West in Tempe, and the Canopy. This slide reflects the year-end number for 2021. It does not include the new Vibe, which just opened this month, actually this past few days, with 102 rooms, and it does not include the new Omni, which is under construction, and that will open mid-year next year with 330 rooms. And we have started to receive data for the first two months of this year, and it appears that our demand for rooms is strong. For example, in January 2022, we saw a 40% increase in room nights consumed over January 2021, and in February, we have an increase of 48% over February 2021. So this bodes well for the rest of the year. Secondly, I want to point out on this slide, the average daily rate in hotel revenue. They are slowly recovering. 2019 is considered the benchmark for tourism, not only in Tempe but in the U.S., and the hope is that we will reach pre-pandemic levels by the end of 2023. I'm happy to report that Tempe's average daily rate for January 2022 was 52% higher than it was the same month in 2021, and our average daily rate for February was 73% higher than it was in February 2021. However, we'll need to see how we perform each month through the range of the year of 2022 to ensure that trend will continue. I want also to point out the hotel revenue. It's a very important measure. This revenue represents hotel rooms sold, not ancillary revenues, such as meeting room rentals, audiovisual, onsite restaurants, and alcohol sales. As you can see, revenue rebounded in 2021, over 2022 by 50%. With a return in consumer confidence and willingness to travel, we will continue to see a strong rebound in room revenue in 2022. In fact, January and February 2022 saw a jump in revenue of 114% and 157% respectively. It is too soon to know if we'll reach the high mark in 2019, that we reached in 2019, but so far, it does appear that we will exceed 2021. And lastly, I mentioned I have, I mentioned a few new hotels open and one more under construction. It is important to note that four of these hotels are considered full-service, meaning they have guest amenities such as meeting space, a bar, or coffee shop, and a restaurant onsite. A few years ago, we had a very difficult time recruiting full-service hotels to Tempe, but the fact that developers are interested in Tempe for full-service hotel development is a sign that Tempe has matured as a high-demand market that can justify higher investments in hotel development. This is a really good sign for us. And because full-service properties normally charge higher rates, I believe we will begin to see higher hotel revenues resulting in, of course, higher bed tax receipts. Next slide, please. So during the pandemic, we had to drastically modify our marketing. We had to drive business, obviously, to hotels and local businesses with demand that was drying up. With business travel and meetings coming to a standstill, we increased our focus on leisure and sports groups. For example, we shifted our focus toward the local market and drive markets, including LA, Las Vegas, and Albuquerque. We were able to increase our summer campaign tactics in both 2020 and 2021 by extending our staycation campaigns through radio promotions and working with Expedia and Orbitz to promote Tempe's hotels. We were especially excited to see the return of events this fall, this past fall of 2021, and were able to leverage these events to give an extra push for the holiday season. We also introduced a new marketing tool called Datify. That provides historical data on event attendees and allows us to retarget them and invite them back to Tempe. And the biggest change that we had was removing the longer haul markets from our campaigns. Think destinations like Denver, Seattle, Chicago, and the Bay Area. As we all know, with COVID, there were fewer flights, and people were not eager to be on a plane. Therefore, drive markets became more critical than ever, especially Southern California, whose COVID restrictions were less strict than they were here in Arizona. This drove a strong number of people to Arizona since being outdoors was considered a safe activity, and of course, we have outdoor activities in spades. It also became more imperative than ever to support local businesses. I'm proud to say that we work closely with our Team Tempe partners. That includes the Tempe Economic Development Office, Tempe Communications Office, Tempe Chamber of Commerce, and the Downtown Tempe Authority. Together, we explored ways to help our small and local businesses to keep their doors open. We plan to continue this work to find solutions to issues facing our local businesses, such as workforce. In fact, we are currently working together to produce a roundtable discussion for employers on April 22, here in council chambers, called How to Find Your Next Employee. And while COVID generated very few positive stories, I think we can all agree that it was a pretty harsh two years, I would have to say that the shining example of one positive outcome was our cooperation with Team Tempe. Now, we were looking, we also had to look at non-traditional ways to help Tempe's economy. We partnered with Local First Arizona, for example, on a Tempe Marketplace page on their website. This provided Tempe's small businesses a portal to sell their items online. We also sponsored a portion of the Tempe Leadership mural at Fifth and Mill, and we sponsored the DTA project at the corner mill in Rio Salado, the Tempe sign that you see. Both projects are useful in driving foot traffic to the area and help beautify the area. Now, looking to 2022, there is now more confidence in travel. One important indicator is the resurgence of air travel in and out of Phoenix Sky Harbor International Airport. We watch this closely. While not back to pre-pandemic levels, traffic is inching closer back to full recovery. With this optimism in mind, we increased our Spring '22 marketing budget to ensure that we had a solid start to the new year. Of course, we anticipated a very strong February and March. However, the delay in spring training was very unfortunate, and we will definitely be impacted by the fact that we had fewer games. We will still exceed 2020, 2021, but we definitely will be impacted. And we're keeping our local and drive markets in place like we did throughout the pandemic, but we are adding back our long and mid, our mid- and long-haul markets. And that's important because normally, those who travel to our destination by plane, they will stay longer, they'll spend more money, they'll pay higher rates where hotels stays. Basically, they're going to spend more money while they're in town. Therefore, it is very important to generate interest to travel and travel to Tempe from these markets, again, Denver, the Bay Area, Seattle, and Chicago. I also want to point out a few items related to our marketing mix that you see at the bottom of the screen. Internally, we track everything that we do: impressions and response rates to our advertising, social media impressions and interactions, group and sports leads, bookings, and their economic impact, the extension of our reach through third-party blockers and social influencers, impressions we have made through earned media for articles written about Tempe. So by tracking our efforts, we're able to determine what is working, what can be modified, and of course, what goes away. For example, annually, we produce our Visitor's Guide. Last year, we participated in a research study along with destinations across the West to better understand what people prefer to see in a guide. We currently are designing our new guide and taking cues from the results, from the research. Our new guide will include more visuals, have more editorial feel, fewer listings, and QR codes that will direct readers back to our website. These changes will help ensure that our content continues to be relevant while encouraging visitors to access our website to get more information. And this is just one example of how we use data to make more informed decisions. Next slide, please. Finally, this is something new for us. I want to produce, I want to provide a new dashboard that we are adding to our annual reporting. Each year, we provide a comprehensive recap of our marketing efforts and results. Since becoming interim president and CEO, I learned more about the city's strategic priorities, and I want to thank Wydell Holmes from the City of Tempe for walking me through this process and helping us to find those areas that demonstrate how our organization helps the City of Tempe achieve its goals. While we have internal goals for our staff, these goals reflect our overarching goals. There are four goals related to the city's strategies. The first, generation of room nights through recruitment of meetings and sports groups to Tempe. This supports priority financial stability and vitality and Performance Measure 5.10. The second goal is supporting current and finding new special events that complement Tempe. This supports the priority of quality of life and Performance Measure 3.19. The third is providing relevant information through our digital platforms, such as our website and our social media. This supports priority of strong community connections, Performance Measure 2.21. And finally, the fourth goal, branding Tempe through our paid advertising campaigns. This supports the priority of strong community connections and Performance Measure 2.21. So moving forward, adding this dashboard to our annual reporting, we will continue to discover how we can continue to partner with the City of Tempe in other ways to reach other strategic priorities. So in closing, the Tempe Tourism Office strives to market and promote Tempe to drive business and revenue to our city. We are proud of our relationship with the City of Tempe. We are grateful to our hotels, restaurants, and attractions for providing us a great tourism product, and honestly, we really look forward to continuing our partnership with our Team Tempe group. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Michael. Vice Mayor Keating?
Thank you very much, Mayor. I don't have any questions. I just wanted to thank you for your work and your job promoting our city. I don't know how long you've been doing this, but I just noticed it a couple of weeks ago on Instagram. You guys do a story of things to do this weekend in Tempe, and the last, like, month, I was like, oh, wow, I didn't know that was going on, and I ended up coming downtown and spending money, so.
Okay.
And I will this weekend as well, no doubt.
There's a lot going on this weekend.
And I really appreciate that kind of, that kind of effort, and I think you guys do an absolutely great job, and I couldn't ask for more, so just wanted to say I appreciate you and the organization's work. Thank you.
Thank you, and make sure you follow us on TikTok, too. There's a lot going on now.
I'm too old for TikTok. It pains me to say it.
You're too old. You've aged the rest of us out, too, then, so.
Yeah, if any of you guys are on TikTok, it's weird. I know you are, Lauren, only because you follow me.
Wow. A lot of secrets being out here tonight. Councilmember Adams?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Michael, for your presentation this evening. It was excellent, as usual, no surprise. Also, I want to tell you, send you condolences for your mother's passing.
Thank you.
I know you've had a tough week, so our hearts are with you.
Thank you.
You're doing a great job as the Tempe CEO, and I just really appreciate that. You've navigated through the COVID situation brilliantly, and it just was so impressive watching you do that, and it's absolutely a pleasure to serve on the Board of Directors with you.
Thank you.
So thank you again for your hard work and your commitment to the city and bringing our tourists in from all over this country and, and, and the world. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
You bet.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Councilmember Garland?
Hi, Michael.
Hi.
Go Tigers. I just, I wanted to say that I, I just want to say that the dashboard is great, and I love how you tied that to our values. I think that's really important because people can follow the trail of what's important to the City of Tempe, and that goes right back into the Office of Tourism. So I just want to say that's a wonderful way to do it, and I appreciate that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland. You have any comments? I could probably make this comment either now or even later in the program here, but I think I'll just make it now. One of the things, Michael, that you really hit upon, and it kind of relates to the downtown Tempe infrastructure improvements, is you said something about the number of business travelers, the new hotels and conference space, and a lot of what's actually happening in the downtown area, and that's very attractive to tourists, both, you know, whether it's leisure travelers or business travelers. And so one of the things I know that, I've had a lot of conversations about this with people out in public, and I know myself and Councilmember Garland and Councilmember Arredondo Savage and I have been having a lot of conversations about this as well. The downtown area, and frankly, just Tempe from a tourism standpoint, is really rapidly changing. Many times when you go out and have conversations with people in the community, they still sort of have this perception that the only people that hang out in Tempe, not even just downtown, but the only people in Tempe are students.
Right.
And obviously, ASU is the largest public university in the country, and it's a really pivotal part of what we do here, and they're a great partner, but at the same
So I just want to say that's a wonderful way to do it and I appreciate that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland. You have a Councilwoman's comments?
I could probably make this comment either now or even later in the program here, but I think I'll just make it now. One of the things, Michael, that you really hit upon, and it kind of relates to the downtown Tempe infrastructure improvements, is you said something about the number of business travelers, the new hotels and conference space, and a lot of what's actually happening in the downtown area. And that's very attractive to tourists, both, you know, whether it's leisure travelers or business travelers. And so one of the things I know that, I've had a lot of conversations about this with people out in public. And I know myself and Councilmember Garland and Councilmember Arredondo Savage and I have been having a lot of conversations about this as well. The downtown area, and frankly, just Tempe from a tourism standpoint, is really rapidly changing. Many times when you go out and have conversations with people in the community, they still sort of have this perception that the only people that hang out in Tempe, not even just downtown, but the only people in Tempe are students.
Right.
And obviously, ASU is the largest public university in the country and it's a really pivotal part of what we do here and they're a great partner. But at the same time, you know, the City of Tempe has a lot of other residents and business travelers, as you pointed out, and leisure travelers.
Right.
And so when we keep talking about, frankly, the evolution of our downtown and the entire community, I think that's a story that we're all going to have to tell. And you do a great job, and Tempe Tourism does, of doing this. But I think all of us at the city are going to have to begin to tell when people start saying, well, I don't think I could have a higher-end restaurant in downtown, or I don't think, I don't think that's going to work because aren't the only people who hang out in downtown and other parts of Tempe students? I have people who don't want to put, you know, don't want to put nicer restaurants in South Tempe in 852-84 because this is sort of pervasive narrative about the only people that live here are students. And that, not knowing that, you know, I don't know if it's still true, but a couple of years ago, 852-84 was still the second-highest per capita income zip code in all of Maricopa County. And so I just think that's something that we're going to have to keep kind of telling that story when we're talking about, you know, food and beverage concepts and retail concepts. Because I think it's really critical to let people know that the university is a really big part of what we do. But there are also a lot of other people here from different age ranges and occupations and income levels who are ready to travel here and ready to spend money. So quite honestly, I mean, you guys do a really great job of promoting Tempe on the tourism side and we greatly appreciate it. And I know we're all going to begin to, you know, really push that narrative out there to bring in new investments and new businesses to the downtown and throughout the entire City of Tempe.
Right. Yes, I think if you notice, one of the things I mentioned is average daily rate. That is a really important indicator because the hotels will not invest when they see a lower, don't see an ADR that they're, that they're expecting. And the fact that you have properties like the West at the Canopy and, of course, the Omni, they see the potential, they know that it's there. So that's not students driving room nights, that's business travelers or leisure travelers. And they may be coming to visit ASU for, for business purpose. But the fact of the matter is we are driving people much more than just, than just the student population. So we do our very best to promote and talk about everything that's local, local restaurants, we cover the whole city. Some people think that we only talk about just downtown, that's not true. We cover the 40 square miles. And so we're always open to ideas. And that's why we love working with the Team Tempe group because we can now share ideas more openly and see if there's things that we can do together to get the narrative changed.
Well, I definitely appreciate that. And yeah, Tempe Tourism does a great job and I think you're doing a great job as CEO. So thank you for your service.
Thank you, everyone.
One else, Councilmember Cubby?
I always like to mention that I'm a former tourism professional.
I know that's right.
And I'm going to start to sing the Massachusetts, the spirit of Massachusetts is the spirit of America.
I will sing it to you. No, I won't. But back in the day, they used to talk about the multiplier effect with tourism dollars. And I think it was calculated at $9 for every dollar. But what is it calculated at now? And do you have a figure like that for Tempe?
We have a figure that is based on, so there are two different things. First, you have the total impact of tourism on the city and then just the impact that we, we provide to the city. So the last, I believe the last annual report shows that, I think it's $12 to, $12 for every $1. So, but the impact is much greater when you talk about the total impact of tourism on the City of Tempe. So we monitor that on an annual basis. As a matter of fact, we're actually going to be going through some research projects this coming year that will solidify what that looks like now because the data is about, about five years old now. So we need to update that. So we will have a new figure probably within the next six months, well, by the end of the year.
A number of researchers at ASU doing work in that area, right? So I assume you'll be making contact with them?
We do contact ASU for different surveys. We especially relied on, I believe they did the most recent spring training survey that was done by Cactus League, so we do rely on that pretty heavily. So yes, we'll consider that for sure.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Cubby. Any of the council members, any further comments or questions for Michael?
All right, thank you.
Great, thank you, great job. All right, next up here, we have item 3B, which is Transportation Demand Management, Transportation Management Association Plans and Mobility Hubs. And I see Marilyn DeRosa stepping to the mic. And for those watching at home, Marilyn is our Transportation and Engineering Director. I should make sure I introduce her with her proper title, so.
Thank you. I like having my own personal assistant here. Robert. Hi, I'm not going to take up a lot of your time. I'm going to let the team provide the presentation. We're going to give you an update on the progress we've made, the transportation team and the consultant team, on transportation demand management, mobility hubs, and our Transportation Management Association. These initiatives are not just about multimodal transportation and congestion mitigation, but are an important component of our, of our climate action plan for reduction of greenhouse gas emissions and achieving heat resilience in the community. So we got a grant from MAG, from the Maricopa Association of Governments, to develop this plan. And in, to simplify all of this language on the screen, transportation demand management is a cumbersome way to say, a way to help people make transportation choices. It focuses on understanding how people make transportation decisions and helping them use the transportation resources that are already available. Transportation Management Association is a group of businesses and agencies. They pool their resources to support the use of alternative transportation strategies. And because the resources are pooled, it's more cost-effective for the commuter programs for those businesses. And then finally, a mobility hub is a fancy way of saying a location where different travel options are available. So the simplest mobility hub would be a bus stop with some e-scooters available to change your mode of transportation. So we've done lots and lots of outreach, stakeholder outreach, you'll hear about that. Robert is our transportation planning manager. I think most of you know him. And he is with one of our consultants, Shannon Scutari. And they, we have a couple of folks, one guy from, guy, Jim Townsend from Kansas, who'll be on the line, as well as Chris Bonjorno from Cincinnati.
Cleveland.
Cleveland, from Ohio. From Ohio. And I don't know if Sasha's with us today, but I'm going to sit down. Is Sasha, is Sasha on the line, too? Sasha's in San Diego. I'm going to sit down and let these guys talk. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any questions? I guess you did the presentation already. Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Robert Yavas. I'm a transportation planner for Engineering and Transportation Department. I am the project manager for this project. I would also like to introduce the consultants for the, for the project who will also be presenting today. The project requires multiple disciplines to complete. Shannon Scutari, our lead consultant for public participation. Jim Townsend from Wilson and Company, our project manager for the Preparation of Demand Management and Transportation Management Association. Chris Bonjorno, who won't be here today, he's shipping margarita in Mexico.
He tried to log on, but it didn't work, so, sorry about that.
And Sasha Jabanovic from Chen Ryan Associates, our mobility hubs consultant. How do you move it?
Just like that.
Thank you. The projects we are talking about today strongly support at least three city council priorities. The first is what we commonly refer to as our 20-minute city goal, which is the idea that residents should be able to meet their daily needs within a 20-minute walk, bike ride, or transit trip. The second is our performance measure for traffic congestion along major streets. And the last is an important goal for the Tempe Climate Action Plan, which is to reduce our community greenhouse gas emissions to 80% of 2015 levels by 2050 and achieve total community carbon neutrality by 2060. I would also like to acknowledge the participation of regional, state, and local partners with the project. Their suggestions and support made the project successful. The project is a collaborative effort with the following partners. MAG, Maricopa County Association, who gave us the money. Maricopa Country, County Trip Production Program Staff. Bali Metro, who also started the Management Association in support of the affected businesses along the IT and Corridor Improvement Project. ADAT, Arizona Department of Environmental Quality. Our local partners, Downtown Tempe Authority. I think Adam is here. Thank you, Adam. Tempe Chamber of Commerce, ASU Parking and Transit, City Commissions, local businesses, industrial, and individual community stakeholders. Shannon will discuss the result of the outreach later in the presentation. I would also like to acknowledge the participation of following city Tempe team members. Braden Kay, Director of Office of Sustainability and Resilience. Shannon Warner, Community Development Neighborhood Program. Suparna Dasgupta, Community Development Planning Division. Gilbus Barker from Economic Development. Craig Hayton, I think he's in the back, Community Services and Parks. And last, but not the least, is Carla Sidie, Engineering and Transportation for making difficult logistics seem very easy. These staff members are very instrumental in making the project successful. Move forward. Tempe has a sustainable vision that is way beyond just being green. The goal is to reduce emissions and cultivate resilience by focusing on principles of fiscal responsibility, enterprise equity engagement, and effectiveness. You will hear these teams reinforcing our discussion today. We are here to talk about three important projects that is new to the city and the region. These three projects are very related to each other. The first is Transportation Demand Management Plan, or TDM. It's a plan for how the city will operate and manage the multimodal transportation system and will include strategies to improve system efficiency and effectiveness. The TMA Plan, which is acronym for Transportation Management Association, is about creating a forum for public-private partnerships and collaboration for a shared goal of improving community mobility cooperatively. The Mobility Hubs Plan is about creating a network of locations where people can each access transportation alternatives to reduce the use of single occupancy vehicle drifts. I think that's you.
Okay, thank you, Robert. I actually want to give a shout out back to Robert. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for giving us the time today. Robert has been working on transportation demand management efforts since he's been with the city, which is now, I think, over 25 years.
Almost.
And before that, he was working on these very, very important measures with Los Angeles. So one of the things that is really critical, as we heard, you know, Mr. Martin talk about, is that I've had a little bit of a reprieve lately because of COVID on transportation congestion. And as Michael said, that's really short-lived. So some of these things that we found over the last year is to, during our stakeholder engagement, which was extensive, dozens of focus groups and individual stakeholder interviews, as well as public surveys and public meetings. Over the last year, we heard from folks and they said absolutely that they want to have an opportunity to have transportation demand management and a Transportation Management Association and mobility hubs to fill that gap between what they believe is the best-in-class, frankly, the top-tier infrastructure that you've already invested in. We heard loud and clear from your own residents here in Tempe and those that commute to work and recreate here, that they said by far Tempe is the most top-tier multimodal transportation system of the entire state. And they want to use it more. They just want it to be more convenient. And they want actually the opportunity for it to be more reliable and for it to be a little bit more comfortable for them to find the way to connect into that system. So our key state, our key takeaways were really that TDM, excuse me for using an acronym, but we did give you the full, it's a little wordy, and the Transportation Management Association and mobility hubs, were that opportunity to increase the technological opportunities for connection between your citizens and the system, as well as the way to communicate and collaborate with the public and private partnerships to be able to connect your citizens and your employees and those that come from other places to, for tourism to the services that you offer. So we would like tonight to give you an overview of some of the technical details. Jim Townsend is going to talk about the transportation demand management specifics. And then Sasha will talk about mobility hubs. And then Chris Bonjorno is an expert in transportation management associations. Fortunately, we were hoping he would connect from Mexico with his Wi-Fi. But instead, Robert is going to tag team with Jim for that part of the presentation. Thank you. Jim, are you on? See, Jason, this is the part.
Yeah.
Oh, they're all.
I just can't, can't see what slide you're on. Are you on the TMA slide, or the TDM slide, I mean? Yeah.
So TDM examples.
Okay, perfect. So transportation demand management really is, it's an effort to try to make the most out of your transportation system. A lot of it does involve investment in infrastructure, but it's typically of the structure within your right-of-ways. And, and so it's, it's focused on trying to allow more people to move about using the existing systems that you have. Some of those facilities are support-related facilities, like bicycle parking, lockers, showers, and so on. And as you've seen in the last few years, you know, scooters have become a, a new way to get around. The other thing that is a part of TDM is the curb management and how that value of the curb is, is provided for different uses based on, on the activities that relate to that curb space. If you go to the next slide. So the other part of TDM is also information-based. And as Shannon mentioned, that convenient level of transportation is one key aspect, along with comfort and safety. And the goal is to allow people to best understand how to get around without having to drive their own car so that those that want to make that choice can easily make that choice and get around between point A and point B without a lot of curiosity or confusion. So once you start combining these various transportation demand management components, that's what turns into a mobility hub, which Sasha is going to talk about now.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. Yeah, so mobility hubs are places which combine the TDM infrastructure previously described in the, in the slides by my colleague Jim into one physical location. Mobility hubs provide infrastructure to improve the first and last mile connections, decreasing some of the barriers and longer travel distances that may put many people out of reach from local destinations or regional-scale transit services. They can be configured in the sidewalk, curbside, parking lot, or off-street. Next slide. Equity focus will be an important component toward, and input toward determining mobility hub locations. Neighborhoods with a higher percentage of structurally underserved racial, ethnic populations, areas with low median household income, and areas with high concentrations of poverty as well as of low vehicles per household are socioeconomic indicators that were a part of that evaluation. Next slide. Other variables, approximating demand, production, and attraction Other variables, approximating demand, production, and attraction such as population and employment density, short travel proximity to employment, proximity to major destinations and major transits, as well as public input and park locations are also variables that are, will influence the potential location suitability of mobility hubs. Next slide. Mobility hubs hosted by private developments are another potential opportunity to help increase the coverage of these resources around Tempe. They are going to be most suitable where developments are in the higher-density parts of the city, where getting around without car is already best supported. They will be a core strategy for development seeking to reduce onsite parking obligations or wanting to reduce vehicle trip impacts or vehicle miles traveled generated by their development. The amenities at these mobility hubs will cater towards the users of the development, though they may also be used by the public. Next slide. I will now hand it over to, back to Jim and Robert to discuss one of the prime mechanisms for implementing and stewarding these measures.
Thank you, Sasha. So as you've heard, you know, transportation demand management, mobility hubs, those all align with the council priorities, and they're very consistent with Tempe's sustainability vision. You know, when organized, they really do help to improve transportation options for those that live, work, play, all in Tempe. And so, you know, the Transportation Management Association is really what we're zeroing in on as a key implementation step to make it successful. So there are over 100 TMAs within the U.S. and Canada, and they work best where there's transportation challenges, a lot of congestion, demand for transportation services, and where there's a need for greater collaboration. And as Shannon mentioned, that you have a community that wants to collaborate and wants to work together to help make these investments a success. You have a lot of visitors in the area, and so having those traveler resources for those that aren't as familiar are also incredibly important, and a TMA can help with that as well. If you go to the next slide.
We're in the next slide. Go ahead.
So, you know, in terms of the context in Tempe, you know, this really is an opportune time for this type of investment and organization to move forward. There's a lot of momentum. There's momentum not only within Tempe, but within the region. And, you know, it supports the needs of the businesses, of individual travelers, and it aligns with all your goals. The, you know, it really helps to also address some of the growth pressures that you're experiencing. And it really is keeping Tempe in the forefront as a leader in the region as it relates to how you address your transportation challenges. And so, you know, we, after, if you go to the next slide, we really understand that, you know, this is an opportunity to craft a TMA that works for Tempe and for its residents, for its employers, partners, including the city itself, DTA, the university, the county, MAG, Maricopa Association of Governments, and Valley Metro. All these partners are all in support of this and are excited to help make this a success.
So Jim, one thing I want to say before Robert speaks to this is that Braden Kay and the Climate Action Plan integrated all of this. And so you can see a lot of this is really the implementation strategies that you heard about, I think, a few weeks ago when Braden made his presentation.
Yeah, one of the things that we heard from the stakeholders is that the TMA organization should be external from the city of Tempe with strong public-private collaborations. One of the issues that was hard, that we needed to separate is this is not regulatory. This is something that anybody can join without being forced to join. So if it becomes within the city, then it sounds like we are forcing this as a strategy instead of that.
And he's looking back at Adam because Adam was here voluntarily. We didn't make Adam come. And I believe there is a support letter that Adam's delivering on this as well from the Downtown Tempe Association.
Yeah, I will email it.
Right. And so we also heard that from the Tempe Chamber of Commerce, and they were very supportive but adamant that this wouldn't be something that was mandatory, but that it would be voluntary, and they're willing to partner with us as well.
And host the project.
So do we hand this back to Marilyn? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So the team has been working on this for a while, and you could tell there's a lot of, a lot of data, a lot of information, but really the city of Tempe is poised at this point, I think, to be a leader in the region to set, to set the tone with respect to what partnerships will look like moving forward. I really appreciate that each of you have sat with Robert, or me, or Shelley, or Eric, and listened to us talk about transportation demand management. It can be a dry subject, but it's super important, like I said, with respect to greenhouse gas emissions, heat resiliency, congestion. There's lots of things that moving forward with this study will really, I think, help the city, the community, and the region achieve. So thank you guys very much. At this point, we're not asking you to do anything. We just wanted to let you know where we were at with the study, that there's a supplemental request for funding to kickstart a TMA, to get some information about, an outline of what a TMA might look like, what the organizational structure might look like, what kind of responsibilities it might have. So the city would fund the kickstart, and during that process, we would talk about what the long-term funding of an organization would look like. So as Robert mentioned, we don't anticipate it would be a city program. It'd be a partnership, and the city would be a member. So you guys will see a request, supplemental request from the Transit Fund, and we're working with our partners. You guys have probably talked with others perhaps about a TMA. We're going to launch our update of our transportation master plan. This will be a big part of it. And I think that's it. We've been to the Transportation Commission's Sustainability Commission. They've all been really supportive. So if anyone has any questions, we got a lot of folks here that would be able to answer them.
Sounds good. Thank you, Marilyn. Thank you, Robert. Thank you, Shannon. And thank you, everyone on the phone as well. Really appreciate it. Any council members have any comments or questions on this item? Councilmember QB.
Thank you. Thank you, Marilyn, and staff, and all the consultants, and Shannon. Great to see you. This is a passion of mine because my husband is a transportation geographer, and he talks about this stuff as he eats his Cheerios, and so I have to listen to it. So I've developed a passion as well. And I know that during some of the Transportation Commission meetings, there was some controversy about that the mobility hub project might be overrelying on car share, on ride-share programs. Has that been addressed, the sense that maybe the mobility hubs are too reliant on that form of transportation?
Councilmember, Mayor, Councilmember QB, Robert, would you, would you like Sasha to respond to that?
Yeah, you can.
Yeah.
I would say that the mobility hubs that we're looking at proliferating in the city, I mean, in the early stages of the project, when we were presenting to the Transportation Commission, we showed what different types of amenities were out there, and yes, some of them did include things such as waiting areas for taxis and ride-hailing or car-share services. But I would say the prototype amenities is definitely going to be more on the bicycle and dockless scooters and things of that sort, and of course, comfortable waiting areas, and then other types of supplemental, supplementary amenities to help with trip planning and travel time information and things like that. But I do think that in the suite of tools and ideas, things like car share is definitely a part of the equation for being able to live car-free, because even people who don't own vehicles might occasionally need to use one for something, and having that option available for the rare occasion makes it easier for one to go ahead with shedding ownership. So.
In short, no. No, I think that the more, the modes that we will be providing are probably bikes, scooters, electric bikes in most of the areas. The demand for shared car, car shares are not that significant yet, so we will keep adding them as we get forward in the process.
And, you know, thank you so much, Robert. Thank you, Sasha. And I know, you know, with the advent of the war on Ukraine, there's a lot of discussion about energy independence and also reducing our dependence on cars because the price of gas has gone so high. And just to ensure that the mobility hubs actually do reduce our dependence on cars, are we going to have some kind of a metric? I know this council, this city loves its metrics, and I agree, and I wonder if we should have a metric for VMT, for vehicle miles traveled, to really measure to see whether we are gaining tangible improvements and seeing increases in ridership and cycling and pedestrian activity.
Yeah. I think the Climate Action Plan has put us in a position to actually measure VMT reductions as part of the process. That's the only way you could get to the greenhouse gas emission numbers, anyway. I think 80% of all the greenhouse gas emissions are coming from transportation-related stuff, so we will try to measure them based on VMT reduction.
Okey-dokey. I want to thank Stephanie, Dr. Stephanie Dutick, for all her Equity Map work. It's really great to see that work advance and the GIS work that we're doing in the city, so thanks so much for that. And the last thing I'd like to say, Mr. Mayor, is, you know, I realize that this is going to be a partnership, and it'll be most successful if we approach it that way, but there are areas of the city where the demand is intense for demand management. I'm thinking of Rio Salado in particular. I mean, think a couple, was it a couple years ago, is it before COVID, when we had some of the businesses from Rio Salado coming to us, you know, weekly at our meetings to talk about the traffic congestion in Rio Salado? And I'm wondering for, you know, if council, maybe this is something that's discussed in the retreat in August, and I won't be here, so it'll be my parting words, but our parting advice, but perhaps there should be consideration when there's development agreements that there be membership in the demand management, you know, required if there's a development agreement, if there's a large, large development, because we don't want one, one, one business having to share too much of the responsibility, especially when you think about Rio Salado, that needs to be a partnership, and it can't just be a few that are partaking and perhaps spending the money to help with traffic demand management while others kind of skirt by. So, you know, my only concern about having it just be defined as a voluntary partnership are those areas of the city where the problems are intense.
Mayor, Councilmember QB, Jim Townsend's on the line, and we've had a conversation about this. I think that our goal in doing all this research and talking to everyone about what will work, what might work, what would their, what would their, what would their employees respond to? Our goal is to create an organization that people want to join, that provides value. We don't want it to be a regulatory organization, so at this point, I think, as we move forward with preparing a plan for the structure, the organizational structure, and the responsibilities, we're going to default to voluntary. I think that Jill Buschbacher, I don't think Jill's here, but Jill has been a huge part of this, and she has several commercial property owners who've been very active and are very interested and mostly along Rio Salado, who want to see this, this organization created and want to be a part of it. So I think we're headed in the right direction, and I think that what the membership looks like and how we compel membership, I think we're going to use a carrot at this point rather than a stick.
Yeah, no, I understand, but when we look at development agreements, there are carrots often in development agreements, and it could be part of the, part of the carrot if we talk about membership and that, the same way we do with other, other aspects of, you know, we look at highly skilled labor, you know, other aspects of, you know, our values or things that we want to see in those development agreements, like recycling. You know, there could be requests for those within the development agreements.
The, the, the good part about this is, once we're talking about this to the business owners, there are people coming back to me asking how they could participate in putting mobility hubs in their development. So it's coming. It's not just a spa class. We think it should be, but it is here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember QB. Councilmember Aronado Savage.
Awesome. Thank you, guys. Robert, it's always so great to see you. You know, your hair has grown significantly, I think, since the last time I saw you. I don't know. And usually when I see you, like, on Facebook, I only see the top of your head. I know you're famous for that. So anyway, you know, I love this. I tell you, my experience being our representative at Valley Metro has really kind of taught me a lot about transportation and what's kind of happening, not only in our, in our area, but within the region. And so I was really happy to see a couple of things on here, too. I think I agree with Councilmember QB, is we work through, working with these developers, there's so many great things that I think we can do. And I remember pre-pandemic, I did a little tour over at State Farm, and we actually had an opportunity with some of our transit people to co-talk to those individuals. And one of the things we asked is, and we talked to 100 of them, we saw 100 different employees there, and of the 100, how many of them actually did not drive a car to work? Five.
Yeah.
So, you know, part of me is, when you talk in here, when you, one of the key takeaways is your number-two bullet is education and awareness, right? And for me, what I'm learning, I think, is a lot of it's about a culture, and it's really talking to our youth. And I see that you have the Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission on here as a partner, but I really do think we need to think about how we can work with maybe our education systems and to just really talk about transportation, even in the classroom and multimodal, what that looks like and what that even means to them. Unfortunately, we're really in a driving culture, right? So if we want to make those changes, I love the idea of the carrot. I'm not a mandate-type person. I don't want to go down that route. However, I do feel like maybe we do need to talk about incentives and what that might look like. And if you go to some of these schools, I happened to just be driving by Tempe High the other day at like 3:30, and they couldn't even get all the kids on the bus. So it really kind of depends on where you are and what's happening. I think that education is going to be a really key piece to really kind of just change that culture, get people excited about trying something different, not needing to have a car. And to me, this is a proactive way for us to do it, the way that works for us and that will work for our residents, and I think people throughout the whole region, and I think we're going to be great leaders. So I'm super excited. I think this will be great. I just don't want us to forget, you know, not about, like, if you build it, they will come. That's kind of what it seems like to me, but I think we have to educate and really teach people, you know, what is available to them and how, to me, it's like freedom. I mean, you are creating a chance for freedom, for people to be able to do a lot of really great things. So I think this is a really great step. I am very happy to see this bring forward, to come forward, so thank you. Robert, I know you said you were the project lead, so lucky you. Maybe you got the short straw. Shannon, always great to see you. I know you're just a great advocate for Tempe, and we're lucky. So thank you, Marilyn. I really appreciate it and look forward to working with you guys all in the near future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Aronado Savage. Any of the council members, any comments or questions? Councilmember Adams?
Great presentation. Really, really appreciate the informative aspect of it and looking forward to going forward with this. And I like it that you're incorporating the sustainability practices and recommendations in it, so good job. And thank you. Good to see both of you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Any of the council members, comments or questions? All right. Hearing none. I think great job, as always. Everybody's, everything's already been said that I would have said, so thank you so much. Really appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Good to see you. Thank you, Shannon. Marilyn, I don't think you're going too far here, so I'm going to go ahead and move on to item number 3C, Downtown Tempe Infrastructure Improvements. And Marilyn, your show.
Thank you. Oh, I need my personal assistant.
Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
Wolf.
While Jason's working on this, again, I'll just say, good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. I'm Marilyn Dros. I'm the Engineering and Transportation Director. In recent conversations with the mayor and some of the members of council, I've come to understand that some of our city's infrastructure, or infrastructure in some locations, may be lacking the quality that you expect. And the council's interested in focusing on improvements to some, some areas of the community through our capital program. While council has expressed interest in infrastructure throughout the city, there are a lot of changes happening in downtown. And staff was asked to share with council an update of some of our upcoming projects. The streetcar, as you know, will be fully operational in a couple of months. We just completed new paving along the streetcar route that was part of that project. Special Events and the TCA have been working to increase activation in the downtown area. You guys heard about that. The Fifth Street Streetscape from Farmer to College is scheduled for construction starting next summer. And staff's been working with the DTA to provide incremental improvements along Mill Avenue between Rio and University. I'll focus during this presentation on the Fifth Street Streetscape and on Mill Avenue, the Mill Avenue improvements. At the end, I will ask council to help me reconcile the existing Fifth Street Streetscape design and council's changing vision for the corridor, and I'll be asking for support to advance the Mill Avenue improvements. As with most of the projects and programs in the city, the work is always done collaboratively with other departments so that elements, different elements of the programs or projects are supportive of several council priorities and of several adopted performance measures. So here, first is the Fifth Street Streetscape. This project includes Fifth Street from Farmer to College. Council provided final design direction in 2018, and the project is scheduled, like I said, for construction. It's an FY 2324, which would be next summer. The team set out, hey, wait, there we go. These are the original design goals. The team set out to design an innovative, sustainable, and iconic street by extending, expanding the landscaping, the shade, providing space for a variety of mobility choices, and increasing short-term parking for quick trips and pickups and drop-offs. You heard Jim talk a little bit about the use of the curb. That's a conversation in transportation lately. And those were the goals while ensuring the street retained the capacity to manage future traffic volumes. The corridor was separated into several segments, and council was provided with up to three options per segment. In general, the options ranged from A, being the most pedestrian-friendly, to C, being the most vehicle-friendly. Option A typically had the highest tree canopy coverage, the most pedestrian space, and parking. And importantly, in option A, some of our existing left-hand turns were removed from the plan. Option B had fewer trees than option A, fewer trees, ped space, and parking than option B, but it retained all those existing left-hand turn movements. It added a little bit of vehicle, oh, I'm sorry, it didn't add vehicle capacity. It matched the traffic capacity and it retained the existing left-hand turn movements. Option C had fewer trees, ped space, and parking than option B, but retained all the existing turn movements. It added vehicle capacity and it added right-hand turn pockets. All the options, regardless of whether there were right-hand turn movements or left-turn movements, trees, pedestrian way, all of the options increased the tree canopy. They all increased pedestrian space, and they all increased street parking over today's configuration. And all the, all the options were able to accommodate future traffic. So the final, the three concepts I mentioned during the previous slide are best displayed here on Forest Avenue. If you look closely at the image on the left, you'll see the three concepts are shown below a photo of the existing condition. As you go down the concepts, you'll notice that the sidewalks are largest in option A. There are the most parking spaces in option A, and there's the most landscape and tree canopy in option A. Although, wait, option C, which, in the blue shade, shows that turn movements remain that currently exist, and right-hand turns are added. So there's a little bit of a trade-off, right, between turning movements and traffic capacity and these other amenities? The final design ended up balancing all the needs with the, with increased roadway capacity being the priority.
Quick thing, Marilyn. Councilmember Navarro has a quick question.
Just a quick question. Forest and, where were we talking?
Oh, I'm sorry. This is Forest and Fifth Street.
Fifth Street, okay.
Now, that was then. This is now, right? The world is a slightly different place today than it was in 2018. And I've heard from some of the council members that communities, including this council, are thinking about public spaces differently. And climate has taken a more prominent spot in policymaking conversations, as has shade and tree canopy and multimodal transportation. The communities, communities are certainly being more creative with their curbs as well, with their curbs and their right-of-way. So I've heard, I heard from council, having conversations with several of you, that it might be, it might be appropriate to reconsider some of these design priorities. So we'll circle back to Fifth Street. So I just wanted to remind where we were with Fifth Street. We'll circle back to Fifth Street at the end of the presentation. But next, I want to briefly discuss what we're planning on Mill Avenue between Rio and University. We've been working with the DTA and merchants, and we have a team that's been working for a couple of years. We've prioritized shade, trees, lighting, sidewalks, crosswalks, and intersections. We're currently designing some festoon lighting on Fourth, Mill and Fourth, on the west side of Mill, and at Sixth, on the west and the east side of Mill. We will, I'll show you a couple of pictures of that. We plan to begin design of Streetscape improvements with phased construction sometime in the next year. We realized when we're out there working that the issues related with the existing electrical and the irrigation infrastructure, we have to address those, or our trees are not going to stay alive, and we're not going to get the kind of artistic lighting that we would like unless we fix some of our electrical problems. But the team tells me that we can phase the improvements along with electrical and irrigation, meaning we don't have to tear out all the electrical and all the irrigation and replace it and then start our project. We can do them in phases. So we can work in segments, along segments of Mill Avenue, fix the electrical landscaping, and do improvements, and then move to the next segment. So that's good to hear. The Fourth Street Festoon Lighting, I just wanted to show you, this is a engineer's drawing. You'll notice here's Cafe Boa. I think you guys know where on this, in this image where Cafe Boa is. It goes down to Maple. Here is a rendering of what it might look like. We had a couple of different options. The DTA and the team selected this design. We'll have to add a couple of additional vertical poles to support the lighting, but we've got structural engineers doing that. Sixth Street, we have the lighting on both sides. Again, here's a rendering of what it might look like. This is looking west towards center point. We were, again, yeah, I think you can see in this image here, the additional vertical, a new vertical pole to attach the lighting to. But we've got, like I said, we have engineers designing that. We went to the, we have some concepts. None of this is designed, except the festoon lighting. We have some concepts. We went to the, DTA went to the merchants and said, what kind of shade, engineered shade interests you on the, on the corners? And we showed them a number of options, and the merchants liked engineering shades similar to this. Like I said, we haven't designed it, but at least we're out there talking and letting the merchants know that we're working on Mill Avenue, we're thinking about what improvements might look like. With respect to green infrastructure, we've been working with, with Richard Atkins, and he's told us that the silver cell infrastructure, he finds very interesting. And if we could use this on Mill Avenue, it provides better access for the tree's root zone to air and water, and, but it requires that we tear up the sidewalk. So we said, all right, well, if we're going to tear up the sidewalk to install these silver cells, let's talk about a sidewalk treatment. So we, again, came up with about four different concepts. The idea here, again, this is not the final design. This was just one of the concepts that the merchants liked. The idea here was to take some of the, there've been a lot, there are pros and cons about the existing brick. I personally like this idea here of taking the bricks out of the sidewalk and using them in a ribbon to pay homage, if you will, to the brick, the history of brick on Mill Avenue on adjacent streets, but to not have 100% brick pattern on the sidewalks. So this is an example. There are different kind of treatments shown along the bottom there. And then finally, intersection treatments. We're working with our traffic team with respect to having images on the pavement. There are some regulatory issues with respect to that, but we're trying to, we're thinking about providing some kind of stamped concrete, stamped asphalt, something, some kind of images in the intersections, the intersection treatments on Mill to, again, to beautify the corridor. So our next steps. Fifth Street Streetscape is in the CIP. The restroom project is in the CIP that we've talked about up here on the, I'm sorry, I keep banging this, in the parking area. And the Mill Avenue improvements, Mark Day has been kind enough to help us propose in the upcoming CIP, $7.9 million in a two-year period for Mill Avenue improvements. We will complete the festoon lighting. We have the money. It's being designed. We're doing that. We're going to identify the phasing for the improvements guided by the electrical and irrigation improvements, and then we're going to start the design of the Mill Avenue Streetscape. So why am I here? I came to the Workforce Readiness and Economic Vitality Committee at the end of February, and Vice Mayor Keating and Councilmember Arredondo Savage sat through this presentation, felt that it was appropriate to come to council to talk about whether we wanted to evaluate the goals and the design of Fifth Street and to ask council for support in advancing the Mill Avenue improvements. So that's why I'm here. And if there's any comments or questions, I'm available to answer them.
Thank you, Marilyn. Let me go to Vice Mayor Keating and then Councilmember Navarro.
I got to say, that presentation is one of those that's even better the second time. You know, I was just on pins and needles. You know, as I said at our, at our committee meeting, you know, I really like all these ideas. I couldn't be happier with the vision that you've laid out as far as, you know, additional tree canopy, the sidewalks, the intersections, the festoon lighting. It really would make, you know, all of which would make downtown Tempe even more of a destination and even more iconic than it already is. In fact, once again, I was watching the Suns game the other day, and of course, they show Mill Avenue, and they show the lake, and they say it's Phoenix. But, you know, and I tweet the NBA about this near daily, but, you know, they don't listen to me. But, you know, I do think that, the fact of the matter is, that area is already iconic to the valley. It's already iconic to the state of Arizona, and we're going to do even more once all this is implemented. So, you know, I'm very pleased you brought this to us. I certainly will support everything and more. I haven't seen anything that I don't like or don't think is a fantastic idea. So thank you and your team for bringing this forward.
Thank you.
Councilmember Navarro?
Thank you, Mary. Yeah, outstanding. The presentation is great. The ideas that you guys are coming up, it's, it's the stuff that I think the council's talking about, especially on Mill. We have, you know, the growth of Mill, the downtown, the hotels, the Omni Center coming up, kicking up. This is the part, this is the point in time that we actually need to hurry, in my opinion, to get this done. So I'm looking at my council colleagues, as we are still developing, yeah, there's going to be, have to be some discomfort in the streets and getting this stuff done, but I do think that we need to start now. We have this great opportunity with our downtown, just like Councilmember Keating said. We often get viewed, more often than not. You watch every morning news program. It's pretty much Tempe and in and around. When you come down here on a, just a normal Monday, Tuesday, it's tremendous. Because I remember not too long ago, when I first got on council, I just used that as a marker. It wasn't really like that. Now Mondays and Tuesdays are just kind of bustling, and that's just because of what we've done already, just to sidewalk the pedestrians. But when you look at the stuff, we're getting tired. This is really getting tired, and we need to uplift it. So I always say, hey, if we can go Disneyland-like, you know, something that is impressive, you know, the cleanness, and that's the other caveat to the stuff, yes, we do need to make these improvements, but we also need to maintain the maintenance of these improvements. We need to make sure that when we do make these improvements, however we do it, has a pizzazz, a pop, but yet it also has the ability to have low maintenance, I guess, if you understand what I'm trying to say. It's a type of ground cover or asphalt or grass or astroturf, whatever it may be. I think that we need to be thoughtful of that as we clean maintenance and everything else, so it has that continual pop as we go through, as a time. I do love the things that you talk about with the, with the tree and the underground root. I don't know for how many years I've advocated this, and this is perfect. I think it expands our root system, helps with the tree growth. Obviously, any tree that we put down here is not a native tree unless we go real desert, desert types tree. This is a different area. We're asking for more lush, more green, more pop, more pizzazz. So anything that helps our tree canopy, I think, is going to be beneficial for this area going forward. And I really do appreciate what you guys are doing in terms of design and concepts. I also appreciate the squares, the intersections. I would only say that whatever we do in that, those areas, I know that we're Arizona and we're heat and we're, you know, it just doesn't clean off as well. I know you guys will look at that stuff. It's just kind of like the green bike lanes. Often when they're, you know, constantly ran over, they lose the color so quickly. So whatever you guys think of or design that pops on there, it's great. I think the shade structures, unique ideas. I love the fact that we're doing unique ideas. It's making Tempe a little more Tempe, you know, that no one else is doing. Because when you look across the valley like Chandler or Gilbert and what they're doing in the downtown areas, you know, it's like, oh, cleaner, it's, it's competing, it's, they're doing things. We need to step our game up. And I think we're the envy of the valley, in my personal opinion, on what cities are trying to be, and that's why they're doing what they're doing. But it's now for us to pop our game and make sure that what we do has a lot of pizzazz and pop. I, for your Fifth Street landscape, I'm, either one, I mean, they're all great. Granted, I would like more trees. I know that reduces the traffic and the congestion. That was the only one, the only thing I'm fearful of, especially on the corner of Fifth and Mill. What does that affect and how does that affect traffic flow? So I would say, if it, if it, if it seems like it's going to have, you know, we still have ASU games and things like that. I know where our downtown's changing, and I probably would look to the council probably on this, on what options to lean for. I'm probably looking at parking. I love that fact of parking on the street. I think people enjoy that. That's option A, but I'm not afraid of B or C, too, so. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you, Councilmember Navarro. Let me go to Councilmember Adams and Councilmember Arredondo Savage.
Yes. Councilmember Navarro and I have been talking about this very issue, and I agree with everything he said tonight. So I want to make a note of that, Councilmember Navarro. Yeah, well said. I also, I love the idea of how you talked about the ribbon through, and because what I'm seeing when I'm down here is a lot of times the bricks are missing. I've seen people trip, and I just think it's a safety factor, but I think also it will look really cool. So we can have people on smooth footing, moving through the neighborhoods and downtown. So I really, I really like that idea, and I just think it will be just safety. I'm familiar with someone with bad feet, and so it just will really help in that with people. people that have disabilities. Also, I love the idea of the electrical improvements. I think we've talked about this many times in the past, Marilyn, so I'm really excited about that. That needs to be done, so good job on that. Also, more trees. I would like to see more trees in this, as many as we can get down here, because we need them for a lot of different reasons. So anything we could do to increase our trees, I think is a great idea and well-needed for our climate problem that we are experiencing. And also, you know, I like the idea of it popping, and I like the Disneyland, you know, what Councilmember Navarro said about like, let's make it really cool down here. I recently spent time in downtown Chandler, and it was, it was actually pretty enlightening, and they've done a really good job with their downtown. And I would just like us to continue to work. I know I've talked to Mayor Woods about it also, that we're going to really keep working on getting our downtown up and just up the game a little bit down here and have it pop more. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Marilyn, I like what you said, lacking the quality. I like what Joel said, it's tired. I mean, come on. It was very nice and I think very professional of you to utilize those words. But I will say, I think one thing too, is as we look at the other cities, and obviously, like you look at the downtown Gilbert, I mean, it's new. It's all brand new. And of course, that's going to look really clean, and it's, it's going to be fresh because it's new and they've had the space to be able to grow. So I love this, and I'm super thankful that we've had the opportunity to work with Mayor Woods and with Councilmember Garland, and really just talk and try to explore. And you guys were great listeners, and I'm so thankful that, you know, also too, Randy and I, and you brought some of these thoughts and ideas along with some of our partners, our stakeholders to the REV Committee, to just really talk about like economic development and how this really all ties in together. It's not just about aesthetics or event space or anything like that. It is just really the culture of the downtown. So I'm very open to all these ideas. I love them. I think, I think that's going to be an evolution as things come to life. And I know everybody says trees, which I love trees. I think trees are great. But I also like the idea of being flexible and creative when it comes to shade. So as long as we're creating shade, whatever that may look like, I'm very open to doing that and to softening the downtown, because I think sometimes it just looks a little rough. So I think that's, that whatever that comes out to, and I know when you talk about red bricks, it kind of seems like one of those things, like you don't really want to mention that, changing that up because that's kind of who we are and things to that effect. But I got to say, I think we have to look at how we hang on to some of those things that we've had and are really make us iconic, but yet take us to the next level. And we need to be open to that, to see what that may be. Because I want to also make sure too, that we have, what I'd like to say is, the maintenance to maintain all these things, so we don't get ourselves into this position again, where our downtown is so tired and some of our areas, just around the whole city, becomes a little bit tired, and we need to really do a big full investment. I'd like to see us just ensure that we are continuing to add to our CIP every year the right maintenance dollars that we're going to need with this really big, huge infusion investment that I think is going to be really great and even just take us to completely a new level. I mean, everybody is so jealous, I think, of our downtown and the fact that we have this awesome man-made lake right there, just creates something completely different and unique. So I agree with all my colleagues and what they have to say. I'm super excited to get this, this thing going. I really do appreciate your professional words. Thank you for that. Mine aren't so professional, I guess, but I'm excited to see our tiredness be refreshed and just really look at that campaign that we've been talking about, not only in the downtown area, but I know we've had this conversation last time, we talked about the CIP as a council, and everybody agreed unanimously that, you know, it's really time to refresh Tempe all over the city. So to me, this is just a really great start to what's, what's to come. So thank you, Marilyn, to you and your team and to the stakeholders that's been involved and engaged in this.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmember Savage. Nikki is working.
I know. We talk.
She's working. She's working on a campaign. Yeah.
Yes, she is.
Thank you, Councilmember Arredondo Savage. Let me go next to Councilmember Garland.
I have to say, I agree with all my council colleagues on what they were saying. I do like all of these ideas. On page 12, or slide 12, the shade cover that you have looking like by the Starbucks, is that, is that something, a shade that we're looking at just like on a corner? Or will that, I mean, I kind of agree with Arredondo, Mayor, I just gave you mayor. Councilmember Arredondo Savage. Switch those seats. But she was saying about, you know, mixture of not just, just trees, but trees and other kind of shades. Is this a shade that you're just looking at at the corner, or is there a possibility of other shade options throughout the street?
Mayor, Councilmember Garland, actually, we were, we've been looking at those engineered shade at the intersections for folks waiting to cross the street.
Oh, yeah.
And we had several renderings. We showed them to the merchants, and they liked these, these small triangular, this small triangular pattern, but it has been focused on the corners for people waiting to cross the street.
That's a, that's a great idea. And I do like that it still lets light through it. So thank you very much. I do like the fact that all of these things are making downtown more inviting to walk and get around, and I do like all that. And did you need to give us, for us to give you option A, B, C? Did you still need that from us, or no?
Councilmember Garland, I'm not expecting council to say with respect to Fifth Street, the Fifth Street Streetscape, that whether they like option A, B, or C, those were shown as, as a refresher for those that were on the council at the time of the, of how we had framed the concepts. I guess what I'm looking for is whether council would like us to reconsider the turning movements, the priority of turning movements versus pedestrian space, trees, and parking, maybe in some, in a more moderate, with a more moderate resolution.
Okay. So I can tell you that I like A.
Okay.
Because I like, because I mean, with the turning and not turning, is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, the one thing that I would, that I just wrote down that I was curious about is whatever, I would like to see the city, the complete city, and every time we make adjustments to our streets, to really, really be looking at protected bike lanes. So finding some way, and you know, sadly, you know, today was another example of what we could, what else can we do to protect people that are on bicycles, on their cycle, bicycles, you know, on our streets? So, I mean, in that rendering, I know it shows that there's bike lanes on there. I don't know what that idea could be or what it, what it should look like, but if there's just some way that we can find an option to make our bike lanes safer across the city would be really great. So just something to think about for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Councilmember QB?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, you may not have wanted us to talk about option A, but I feel strongly too that option A is the best option for a pedestrian-friendly downtown. And if this area can't be pedestrian-friendly in our city, I don't, you know, in no area it can be. So I would like to see more shade, and as Councilmember Arredondo Savage said, it doesn't necessarily have to be trees. It can be manufactured shade or mechanical shade. Those art elements are really beautiful, the shade. But I would like to see more trees, more shade, to have it be, you know, so shady that we, that we actually look for a respite, to come down the Mill Avenue and look for a respite. We know that just a half a mile away, or quarter mile away, the temperatures are cooler, like 11 degrees cooler in the Maple Ash neighborhood than they are in downtown Tempe. And if we want to have a thriving business economy, we need to have a, you know, the cooler streets. And I would just plead with you, no, no more palm trees. We know palm trees are not even considered to provide shade, and there's also higher maintenance and operation costs, having to, to cut those palms and trim those palms. So that's just my own personal request, but I'd like to see option A. Also, I like, we've heard, heard for years that the downtown business community and others think it's time for the, the bricks to be replaced. And so it does seem to be, I like the idea of having this homage to the bricks throughout the surface treatment. And perhaps it could be art, art projects. It seemed like you were implying that too, that there could be punctuated areas where there would be some historical representation of Tempe. I think that's a really great idea, to bring art into it and have art competition for those areas. But I think it's time to see the bricks go away, and the silva cells method that, that Richard Atkins is talking about seems to be really appropriate. We'll have the right tree, right place, and we'll have, have better access to water and air and be healthier for, for all of that technology, for that green infrastructure. So I'm highly supportive of that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember QB. Councilmember Navarro?
Yeah, and just, thank you, Mary. And just real quick, go back. So I know that there's ballards installed on Sixth Street, I believe, by the hotel, at least the capability of ballers to be put in there, which is great. I don't know if you've seen it, but anyways, if we have the ability, I know we talked about using protection of the trees, which is great, we can move trees out, block off streets, Sixth Street, I'm sorry, not Sixth, Seventh Street, ballards, by the hotel that the Weston. But the capability is, as we plan, we have streets ripped out, we have the ability to do various other things. I hope we can keep that in mind, you know, as we, you know, we do things within the downtown area. How do we, how do we make that happen, so to speak? Granted, we do the pull-out trees now for Sixth Street, and we have those staged up if we want to close down that street, which is great. But there's other areas that, you know, just going forward, we think about those things. Just the other thing on tree canopy and Fifth Street, yes, but I hope we have a, if we need, I would love for us to see what we're going to be planting in there, probably before it goes in there. We've had the existing trees right now, which are Charlie Brown trees, in my opinion. They just kind of barely have a branch. They provide minimal shade and they only go up so high. So whatever we do, I hope we have kind of an idea what that looks like and how it translates, not just random trees, but we coordinate our tree canopy, so it has appeal, which I think is really important, and that's probably why I stress on every street in our city, is when we do our tree canopy, we have some visual coordination of the trees, so it makes the area kind of look different. And I will fight for the ficus on Mill, because I've done that for so many years.
Good hashtag.
I will make a shirt.
Fight for ficus.
I know that probably, you know, they might be looking at that as we go forward, and there's probably some things, but personally, I think the ficus, along with the bricks, you got to keep some of the bricks there. It's like, like Lauren said, just kind of that taste. But I would, for me, I would say ficus just has what Mill is about, at least on Mill.
Thank you, Councilmember Navarro. Vice Mayor Keating?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, something that I thought of after our last committee meeting and then forgot about until just now, is on Fifth Street, would it be possible with these, when we make these improvements, to look at or maybe study doing a crosswalk where you kind of go, you know, anyway? I mean, I'm not sure if that, to me, it seems like that would reduce the number of red lights we need to have, yeah. Because that's kind of like the hub of our downtown, you know, that corner. And I think that would also, people won't be staying in the heat as long. I don't, it's something I would like to look at, explore. I don't say it has to be part of this, but I would like it to like start to be kicked around a little bit. Could you speak to that a little bit?
Mayor and Vice Mayor Keating, Shelley Siler loves scrambles, right? So I'm just, yeah, certainly. Shelley and her team can look at that.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Keating. Councilmember Adams?
Yes, I really like option A also. I just wanted to, I think we might even have consensus on it, but I do like option A. And the trees are, I really feel like the trees are just so much more beneficial than just a regular shade structure. They have a life, and I would just like to see us have more trees. And I agree with Councilmember QB that I think it would be helpful to have a lot of art features down there and make it like something that people enjoy walking, and they could check out various arts, art features. So, thank you.
Right.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Couple of quick things. So I know, Marilyn, you said you weren't specifically looking for direction about the Fifth Street Streetscape, but I mean, I also prefer option A as well. So I mean, I know you're saying you're not necessarily looking for a full direction, but, you know, I definitely heard, you know, four or five people up here, including myself, say, you know, I think we'd like to come back with something that looks a lot more like option A and less like option C, at least from what council said this evening. The thing that I would be interested in as well is seeing if, you know, there's some way that maybe you and maybe Richard Atkins could come back and talk about what the landscape plan looks like when it comes to the trees, to Councilmember Navarro's point. You know, I heard him earlier say, look, I'm not, I kind of like A, but at the same time, the reality is I do want to see exactly what kinds of trees we're going to plant and what it's going to look like. So I think that would be very informative for me, and I know, you know, myself and Councilmember Garland, we're the only two people who are on, were on council for either of these presentations when they happened originally in 2018 and 2019. So this is definitely new for both of us, so I appreciate this. So yeah, I mean, definitely if we could get something that looks more like, like option A as opposed to option C, I think that would be great, given what council has said this evening. And the other thing is, I mean, just generally speaking, everyone else said everything I could have said regarding the downtown improvements, and I talked about that a little bit during Michael Martin's presentation earlier. So I support everything that folks said, and so I won't, you know, I won't belabor that point, but Councilmember QB, anything else, or?
Well, just, I'm sensing that Councilmember Navarro might be chaining himself to the trees. I think, it's kind of hot, Joel. I kind of like that. Join you, we'll chain ourselves.
That could be a good TikTok video. Exactly. Along with the song, the Massachusetts song. So, but overall, I mean, it sounds, does anyone else have any other comments for Marilyn? Questions? Well, now Marilyn, it sounds like a pretty slam dunk of a presentation. This sounds great, and a matter of fact, I got a couple of text messages from people today, just residents who said, hey, I'm, you know, we're here, you know, the council's talking about doing improvements to Fifth Street into the downtown. And I thought it might be, well, you know, criticism, but then it was like, no, this is great. Like, you guys should go forward and do that. So, you know, the couple of people, I know it's a small sample size, that sent me the messages this afternoon, were very supportive. And so, no, I think this is great, and I think we should definitely move forward, and that's definitely what you've heard from council this evening. So thank you.
Well, thank you, Mayor and council. I'll follow up with Andrew, just to make sure that we are clear on, I think I understand the direction.
Oh, one of the quick things is for, I'm looking at Shelley too, about the scrambles. I'd love to see if we could explore one too at Rio Salado and Mill as well. I was out there having a conversation with a couple of the larger property owners a couple of days ago, taking a tour, and that was one of the things they suggested to me just in our walk down the street was, is there some way that we could kind of do a scramble and go diagonally between all four corners? We think that would be great. And so, you know, kind of seconding Vice Mayor Keating's comment about Fifth and Mill, I'd like to see if we could also explore Rio Salado and Mill in addition to.
Mayor, I told them to lobby you on it.
That was you! Well, it clearly, well, it clearly worked. So, you know, kudos to you.
I think that, I'm not a traffic engineer. I think Shelley would say that it, what it does is it takes, it creates a longer period of time that the traffic's waiting to move. So I think ultimately, it, it's less conducive to traffic movement and more conducive to pedestrian movement, but, but it certainly can be studied and we, and it can be certainly looked at.
Yes, please.
Not to have this meeting go forever. I know U of A is playing later during, and I know you're excited about that. Yeah, and sorry, Joel, you know what? You're going to talk about interior walls. You know, it doesn't have to be all the time either, too, right? Maybe it's just like Friday, Saturday nights, you know, when Mill Avenue is packed, hopefully when we get these new bars and restaurants come in. So there's something to like look at. It doesn't have to be permanent all the time, just, you know, when it's busy. Thank you.
Okay.
You got it. Thank you, Marilyn. Appreciate it. All right. Next up, item 3D, Initial Recommended Five-Year Capital Improvements Program and Acceleration Strategies. And I'll bring up Tom Dunzing, our interim deputy city manager and CFO, and Mark Day, municipal budget director. And I think Wydell Holmes might be on the phone potentially as well, so.
Correct. Either way, you can ask. Thank you. Mayor, members of council, good evening. Tom Dunzing, interim deputy city manager, and I'm joined tonight by Mark Day, municipal budget director, and Wydell Holmes, who'll be joining us virtually, strategic management analyst. We're pleased to present the initial recommended five-year capital improvement program. Wydell will also talk about acceleration strategies used as to put together this program. about acceleration strategies used as to put together this program. As mayor and council understands, probably one of the most important things you do is develop, approve a budget, an annual budget that allows this city to operate. And this is kind of the first step. We're here tonight with the CIP because city charter requires us to bring a CIP before council, at least 90 days before the fiscal year end, and that's what we're doing. And so the main focus tonight, although it's a big, robust CIP, but the main focus is really on our limited funding source, which is geo bonds. And so a lot of the discussion on prioritization center around what's available in geo bond funding. There's a number of documents within the packet. You all have received hard copies, a very big list of geo bond funded projects that we can, thank you, thank you. And so I won't go through each of the items in your agenda, but they are numerous. A couple of highlights, and we've hit on a couple tonight, is that ARPA, there was, there was a lot of discussion on the ARPA federal funding that the city got. In the prior year CIP, one of the things is we didn't understand the rules yet, the rules actually hadn't come out yet, on the ARPA funding. We now understand the rules. We've had to compress the spending of that, in other words, spend that money sooner. It goes, it relates to a couple of projects that Mark will talk about, but we're pleased that Mark and his staff were able to basically maintain those projects in this CIP. So we didn't have to compress the spending and lose those projects that we funded in the out year. So that's, that's a good story. The other thing is, we are now able to identify and include in the next two years of this CIP, funding for movement of the traffic ops yard and priest yard to the TMOC facility. And so Mark has a couple of slides to talk about that. We talked about it in December, and we'll follow up a little bit tonight on that. And they did a phenomenal job fitting that in. That was no small task. And finally, Marilyn talked a little bit about it, and I won't go into detail. We were able to find a little bit more funding for the downtown improvements, and almost doubling the funding of that compared to what was requested, which you saw in February. So that's a, that's a good story. We're seeking feedback from you on the prioritization of these projects. Council has the, the ability to tell us what's important, what's not important, what you see tonight. Luckily, within this listing, it's usually a red, green, yellow, red. The way that the budget staff was able to size this, we decided it's better off not to have anything in the yellow, so it's a little bit easier. And I believe of the 150 projects, there's about four in the red. So again, hats off to the budget staff. They did a phenomenal job, and, and I'm really pleased. There are a number of slides to get to tonight, and with that, I'll turn it over to Mark and Wydell, who will do most of the heavy lifting. Somewhere.
All right, next slide, please. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mark Day, municipal budget director. So although individual projects would address various performance measures across all city priorities, this process of presenting and discussing the initial recommended CIP relates most closely to City Council Priority 2.11, which has received the GFOA Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting annually for transparency and disclosure of information. So today's presentation, as well as our public-facing budget process in general, contribute to our goal of transparency in financial reporting. Next slide, please. We'd like to briefly review the upcoming key public meeting dates as we move through the budget development process. So you can see there in February, we had some public forums, and I'll talk about that on the next slide. On the 17th, we were here with all of the proposed projects for the CIP, as well as an update on the long-range forecast. And as Tom mentioned, tonight, we're here to present the initial recommended CIP. We did have scheduled an April 7th work study for follow-up if need for tonight, but if any issues need to be addressed, follow-up items, we can do that on the 21st. So the 21st, we'll be back with the city managers' recommended budget, both capital and operating. Then we have a follow-up, and then you can see the more formal dates that are driven by state statute with tenant adoption, final adoption, and then adoption of the property tax levy. Next slide, please. So in coordination with communications and media relations, as well as neighborhood services, we developed a public outreach plan to provide information to our residents about the city's budget and allow residents to provide us input and feedback during the budget development process. So we had an online forum to gather resident input about budget priorities. This was open from February 1st to March 7th. We also met with the Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission just two days ago to gather youth feedback, and I'll review the results of the forum and the MIAC discussion in a few slides. We also held two virtual public forums, and these are recorded and posted to the budget website. We also, this year, had two pop-up events, one at the Northside Multi-Gen Center and at the Kiwanis Rec. Center, to answer questions and encourage the community to take the online survey. In addition to the online and public forums, we established a public website that contains resources and information for our residents on all aspects of the budget. And then we coordinated with community relations and neighborhood services to inform residents about budget meetings and online resources via Tempe Today, press releases, and social media apps. Next slide. Okay, so we received 494 responses to the online forum. In the five weeks that the forum was open, which was 100% increase from last year, so that's big news for us, 100%, so we had 248 to 494. They were asked two questions. First, how would the city invest in advancing the five councils' adopted strategic priorities in order of importance? And as you can see there, the number one response, if we average the responses, in order of importance, first was quality of life, and then safe and secure communities, sustainable growth, financial stability, and then strong community connections. Then, the second question, which is similar to the start tool, residents were provided a theoretical $100 to spend among various programs and services aligned to the five council priorities. So they were provided funds in $10 increments, and they were to allocate them based on the priorities. So based on the 494 responses, this is the top 10. So you can see the number one response for the top priority was homeless services, and then, as you can see, city neighborhood parks, all the way through workforce and affordable housing programs. Then, we also, I, whoops, if you can go back one slide, sorry. So I, we also surveyed MIAC for their top 10 responses. Their number one response was also homeless services, which I found interesting. The ones that MIAC had in their top 10 that were different from the community results were police oversight, additional training initiatives to promote diversity, equity, and inclusion, water conservation, and sustainability programs. We also allowed residents to provide feedback to us, and in your packet, you can, we provided you the comments. So we received over 600 comments from the community about budget priorities. Next slide, please. We'd like to briefly review the steps taken over the last five months in developing the initial recommended CIP program. So first, departments have adopted comprehensive asset management programs that enable them to project the ongoing capital needs in order to maintain the city's existing infrastructure, maintain service levels, or accelerate performance measures. Departments propose, proposed projects were provided in your February 27th packet, and they totaled $1.4 billion over five years. So I just want a big thank you to all the departments for all their efforts in putting together a well-thought-out and planned, proposed CIP program. At the same time, the budget staff, we were establishing funding capacities from all available sources, including pay-as-you-go and bond funding. We applied city council-approved scoring criteria, and Tom's going to talk about that in a few slides. We went back to the departments to get their feedback about how we had prioritized the CIP. And then we're here tonight to review our prioritization and receive your input on the initial projects to be included in the CIP. Next slide, please. As mentioned, we have a few slides that discuss funding of the CIP. Available funding for the CIP can be broken down into three categories. Next slide, please. First, we have our enterprise funds. So those are those operations structured like a business, and you can see they're listed there, water, solid waste, golf, and ambulance. The user fee is support cash funding, or pay-as-you-go, or repayment of debt. And then we have our special revenue fund, where the revenue received is restricted for specific purposes, and we utilize that funding either to pay debt or cash fund projects. And then our largest category, general governmental, the source of funding is either cash or geo bond funding that is authorized by the residents in various categories. So in all these categories, we try to leverage grants, development impact fees, and other outside revenue sources as much as we can. So within these three categories, there are two main funding alternatives that we must consider. Next slide, please. So the first alternative is the use of cash to fund projects. Cash to fund CIP projects would compete with cash that we would use to fund items in the operating budget. Cash funding for capital projects is included in the amount subject to the state-imposed expenditure limitation, but if we use cash, we also avoid interest expense that we would incur with bonds. The other alternative is bonds. Debt limits are in place to protect taxpayers and ensure responsible issuance of debt. So debt limits are established based on property values, that's by state statute, for geo bonds and pledged revenues for excise tax revenue bonds, like in the water, wastewater program. And then secondly, the voters have to authorize the bonds, which are repaid by city property taxes. The city's last bond election was November of 20, and we're planning for another election in November of 2024. The city has a predictable revenue stream to pay the voter-approved bonds from the secondary property tax levy. All right. So this is a graphical representation of what's being proposed. On the left, you can see the adopted CIP. It is a little over $1 billion. And then the, in the dark blue is the geo bond funded, geo bond funded projects, $364 million. What's being recommended is $1.3 billion and 437 from geo bonds. And this is the source of funding. As you can see, we're utilizing quite a bit of bonds, geo bonds, or enterprise excise bonds in the water program. And we also are utilizing cash and other outside funding. And you can see, as Tom mentioned about the TMOC, we have the ARPA funding there for $39.9 million. This is a summary of the proposed CIP based on the major capital programs. It represents investments in the city's water, wastewater infrastructure, parks, public safety equipment and facilities, streets, and the IT infrastructure. Your packet contains a detailed listing of specific projects funded, funded under each of these categories.
Great, and I'll take it. So next slide, please. So now that Mark has looked at the capacity to fund our CIP, just like to talk a little about, about the prioritization that we use to prioritize the geo bond projects that you have in front of you. Council approved the, the prioritization that we use to go back and evaluate each project and get you that list of number 100, 1 through 150-ish. The primary prioritization criteria are public health and safety, asset preservation, and a council-adopted performance measures. And then you can see the secondary prioritization that we used, the budget staff and myself, to prioritize that list in front of you tonight. Next slide, please. So here's just a snapshot of what you have in front of you. I won't go through this list. As Mark said, we're bringing forward a recommended geo bond funded CIP of $437 million over the next five years. We really don't need to target a specific dollar amount tonight. We just want your general feedback. If you're comfortable with the prioritization of the projects, something not in there, I'll talk a little bit about the, the public comments that were made tonight here in a second. And, and then based on your feedback, then we'll come back in, is it April? April, right, right, to, to take another look at the, at the CIP. The couple projects that were mentioned tonight, one is the Roosevelt Project, is it's the Stormwater Project. Of the 150, it's ranked 11th, so it ranked very high in priority. The, the comment tonight was, can we push it up? And we can look at council feedback for tonight to get that direction. Staff was feverishly going back and forth on what we can do over there. And what we can do is, is Tempe, through an IGA with City Scottsdale, Maricopa County, we can advance the funding for the Scottsdale portion, basically. If we do that, and Maricopa County agrees that they can advance their funding a year before the information that we have, we feel we can advance that entire project to start design this summer on the project. So, Mayor, if we've got consensus to do that, we'll squeeze it into the CIP. Any impacts, we'll come back and let council know.
Everyone good, council?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. The other comment was the Double Butte Cemetery. We heard council talk about the, the refresh of the double, I don't want to use refresh, about, about the upgrades or of the Double Butte Cemetery. I apologize, Councilmember Herr Dona Savage. And Mr. Hayton, based on that feedback in February, he'll be coming to council on the May 5th, at the May 5th work study session, to talk about that particular project. If we get to a point where council wants to advance that, I can tell you, it will depend on the dollar amount. If the dollar amount is relatively small, I can't define relatively small at this point, we could probably squeeze that in relatively quickly. If it's a major cost, something like that, we'll have to take that and, and do a little bit more planning on that. In other words, it may be out a little bit. But we'll know a lot more May 5th, when Mr. Hayton comes and gets some direction from mayor and council. So next slide, please. Real quick, what you see is a graphical representation of where the CIP projects land. Again, these are the geo bond funded projects. The real takeaway here is the, the focus is really on health and safety in Tempe and asset preservation. So, so toward the right of the, of the Y-axis and, and to the north of the X-axis. So, next slide. I'll turn it back over to Mark.
There are some projects included in the initial recommended CIP that we'd like to take a few minutes to highlight. First one is facility projects that are recommended for funding. As you can see on your, the color coding there, orange would be signify acquisition, blue would be planning and design, and then green would be construction or improvement. So typically, we would plan in year one with construction occurring in the out year. This slide shows the 266 million recommended investment in facilities and the phasing of those projects. The 2019 Makers Facility Study and Other Site Plan Study serves as a basis for the timing and prioritization of those projects. So you can see city hall improvements, we have Clark Park on there, and then we have some fire stations that we are, there's an acquisition for land on Station 3, and then you can see some planning and design, and then construction. The Community Center Complex master plan, we have designed in year five. And then, next slide, please. The Ken McDonald Clubhouse, scheduled for design and then construction in 25, 26, a new police substation, permanent supportive housing, and then the Tempe Municipal Operations Center, or TMOC, Phase 1 and 2, and we'll talk about that in a few slides. Next slide, please. So, due to funding capacity restrictions, there were two projects in the facilities that are in the red, so they did not score sufficiently to recommend for funding. So I'll talk about both of these. The first was the Family Advocacy Center acquisition. So Human Services proposed a project for the acquisition of a facility in 25, 26, for a permit location for the Family Advocacy Center. We just wanted to note that there is a CIP project in the current CIP that would pay for tenant improvements for a lease space, as well as operating budget to cover any operating costs for a lease space. So that's a recurring funding. And then the other project that did not score high enough for funding was the purchase of a warehouse property for facilities, print shop, and the IT warehouse functions. So we'll have to explore other options, including the lease of a warehouse property for that.
Mark, really quickly, Councilmember Garland had a question.
Yeah, thank you. So the Family Advocacy Center, the lease that we have, or the money that we have in there, will that take us to that date? The money that we actually, that we have in currently, that'll take us to the leasing and the?
It would. So, Councilmember Garland, it's recurring funding to cover rent, utilities, custodial, IT costs. So we, in the current CIP, programmed in tenant improvements, as well as the operating cost for a lease space.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You bet. Councilmember QB?
But just to be clear, the Family Advocacy Center would be a rental until the acquisition that we're, we're still moving forward with the, I know we're having problems finding the right facility to rent, but?
That is correct. And it, the acquisition, the permanent purchase of a facility did not score. It's in the red, not recommended to be funded at this time.
But it's not going to stop the, the center from opening?
That's correct, yes.
Right. And we're still looking at ASU, with some possibilities of some co-location perhaps, or some help with acquiring a facility?
I believe Paul Bentley's here, maybe he can address that question?
I'll just talk about it at a different time. That's okay. I don't want to take a subtrack, sorry.
No worries. I was thinking, you know, probably think the point you were, and I don't want to speak for either council member, was that for anyone watching this meeting, just because we're not doing an actual acquisition right now of a physical building, it doesn't mean that the work of- the work of creating the Family Advocacy Center is start isn't starting, and that people who have been, you know, victims and survivors of, you know, domestic violence and sexual assault are still going to have a place, you know, to to really meet with people from our CARE 7 team and from other folks as well. But just wanted to make sure, yeah, that someone didn't look at that and say, wait a minute, they said they were going to fund it, now they're not funding it. The work is still continuing, and we're still going to be leasing a space, and that work's going to go on. So. Councilmember Adams.
Thank you. I just was looking at Warner Road and Chirine Canal back, Pet Signal, and I I think we might need one on Guadalupe also. I'm kind of looking at Shelley. Are we going to have that in? In? Yes. Okay, okay, very good. All right, so we're all good. Thank you. Just I've I've talked to some bike bicyclists recently that have been concerned about crossing those major roads, so we're all good.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Mark?
Thank you, sir. This is a representation of our investment in city facilities. You can see we're investing not only in new facilities remodel, which was the listing that we provided, but also into deferred deferred and preventative maintenance. So 88.5 million is proposed over the next five years. Next slide, please. This is the Tempe Municipal Operations Center TMOC recommended timeline and funding. The initial recommended CIP includes funding for the TMOC to replace the current traffic operations and priest yards. The project is budgeted at $90 million and represents one of the city's largest general governmental projects. The current adopted CIP, which is that placeholder you you see there at the top, we did have a placeholder for a city facility to be funded for 27 and a half million dollars in 2425 and 2526. During the December 21 work study session, we presented two funding options for the movement of those two yards. The first was a phase relocation based on the requirements for the movement of the traffic ops yard in June of '23, so that was phase one. And utilizing the 27 and a half million planned funding plus additional geo bond funding requested in the '24 election, that would have been phase two. But based on our analysis of available funding, we're able to fund the $90 million in fiscal year '22 through '24. That allows completion of both phases. So phase one would be the traffic ops yard, and then phase two would be the priest yard. The Maker Study did identify the priest yard as in poor condition and needed to be relocated or some a new facility. As far as funding, we're planning to use the ARPA funding, American Rescue Plan Act, as well as general fund cash, solid waste, excise bonds, and general obligation bonds. So the solid waste operations will occupy a portion of TMOC. So like the other enterprises, special revenue funds, they would need to pay a portion of the capital cost for that facility. So we plan to issue excise bonds over 20 years. We're aware of the impact on rates, so we're proposing that the general fund would subsidize the alley maintenance program by a like amount so that there's minimal impact to the rates. All right.
So I'll I'll take this last one before we turn it over to Wydell. Just to just a couple of highlights, I talked about the downtown improvements. We were able to increase and accelerate the Smith Innovation Hub CIP request, I think it was 100,000 last year, it's 5.1 million in this request. We added $1 million for emergency repairs at Fire Station 6 downtown. I talked about the 35.4 million in projects we were able to maintain by compressing the ARPA funding. And then finally, there is an initiative that is going through the Workforce Readiness and Economic Vitality Committee. It's a branding type exercise, and it's it's basically to kind of celebrate the CIP program and what we're doing, the extensive investments we're making in this community. And so I would anticipate that staff's going to go back and work through the REV Committee with the Vice Mayor and Councilmember Robin Aaron Dona Savage to kind of to develop this this program. And with that, I'll turn it to Wydell, who is here.
Quickly, Councilmember Adams.
Just going back to the the funding sources, I'm just wondering, is traffic operations going to be located then in in the new TMOC?
Mayor, members of council, yes.
So could we use transportation funds and supplement any of that with the transportation funds since traffic ops is going to be there?
Mayor, members of council, the answer is yes. We use streets, bond authorization, so that's the money that's available for them. It is available, and we have we have plenty of authorization, and that's the way we're going forward with that piece. So that's exactly what we're doing.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams.
Okay. And with that, I'd like to, next slide, and turn it over to Wydell Holmes, who will be joining us virtually.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Mark. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Wydell Holmes with the Strategic Management and Diversity Office. And tonight, I'd like to present to you the budget acceleration models for the capital improvement program. We have 13 related performance measures to the CIP models, and these were identified by council at the December 16th work study session. And these priorities were identified and informed by the Start Tool data. There are acceleration models that will be presented at the April 21st works work study session, and that will be part of the operating budget recommendations. The performance measures for acceleration, they are consistent with the areas of opportunity identified in both the 2022 community and business surveys. These areas include neighborhoods, streets, sidewalks, economic and business development, social and human services, as well as traffic. We identify areas of opportunities by looking at what's important to our community but is receiving lower satisfaction in our survey. I would also like to note that we continue to create strategies that are informed through a lens of equity and inclusion. And as the council priorities and related measures cross service areas and program areas, we are leveraging interdepartmental collaboration and community partnerships regarding accelerations, as you've just heard, even through the transportation demand management and intersections with sustainability. So for our first acceleration model, I'd like to focus on the pavement quality index. If you'll, next slide, please. And our PQI, we have a goal and a target of 70 PQI across the city by 2028. We are currently sitting at 60. However, I do want to note that council support continues as we move the needle to achieve our target. We want to focus on residential streets. These residential streets are 57% of the pavement network. And the planned projects for residential include University Park area, Maple Ash and Daly Park, as well as Clark Park, and an additional year Victory Acres. And I mention that because these are strategies that we can look at in regards to how we overlay with our community satisfaction survey and the standards that we would like in every community and neighborhood in Tempe. We also look at strategies that lever opportunities with development. An example of this is our pavement improvements along our streetcar project and with our potholes on Apache. And again, we look at this through a lens of equity and inclusion through our operations and equity data map. Next slide, please. So as you heard earlier, through our online budget survey as well as in our community survey, homelessness is a priority for our community. And our particular measure right now is in regards to the individuals we serve through our navigation and key management system. But on the next slide, when we get to that, I'd like to talk about a little bit our companion data point in regards to our point in time count. But our acceleration category strategies really fall into the categories of increasing our program capacity and shelter. This includes increasing our ability to respond to calls for service, our hours of service, increasing our service regarding mental health as well as unemployment. The outreach with our both capital and operating budgets will expand our reach to not just three zones, but four zones, smaller zones, and also include seven day week outreach. This geographical outreach is also enhanced by our tools that we've put together through an online and camping map system. Additionally, the city recently entered an innovation track with Harvard Bloomberg, and we are currently meeting with businesses, neighbors, service providers, and individuals experiencing homelessness. We want to make sure that we're looking at homelessness not only through the lens of one experiencing homelessness, but our whole community and the intersections that homelessness may have with that. We also know that panhandling is an element of concern, and so one of the strategies is our connection with the Arizona Department of of Transportation regarding panhandling at our off ramps. And so on our next slide, thank you, I'd like to talk a little bit about our point in time count. In the top right chart, you'll see that Maricopa County reported a consistent increase of unsheltered individuals over the past five years, and that's a 35% increase from 2020 to 2022. In contrast, though, Tempe's point in time count showed a 3% decrease from 2020 to 2022. And I think it's well to note that the support by Mayor and Council regarding homeless solutions efforts, implementing specific strategies that increase outreach, emphasis on mental health and substance use support, our parks and recreation cleanup efforts, and in communication and media efforts have all contributed to this decrease. Additionally, consistent park security presence, increase in shelter and housing options make the difference between the county and the city of Tempe's data. And moving to tree coverage, which has been a little bit of a hot topic tonight as well, our emphasis, next slide, please, is really to focus on maintenance and especially the maintenance of young trees. Council previously mentioned also a request in regards to loss prevention, and that includes both on city and a developed private developed property. And so we're looking at collaboration across departments regarding policies and enforcement regarding those investments. The other thing is we have some strategies regarding neighborhood grants and cost match programs, as well as an increase for community outreach. I'd also like to mention that Richard Atkins, our Arborist, has put significant work in making sure that our plants and trees survive, the emphasis on repairs and replacement of infrastructure, as well as preparing the city for any increased planting in the future. Most importantly, in regards to equity and inclusion, we've prioritized canopy projects with the data that informs us from the American Forest Tree Equity Score. This is a combination of our canopy target and a canopy gap that we might be experiencing in neighborhoods. The American Forest Tree Equity Score focuses on income, employment, race, age, our climate, as well as health in our neighborhoods. And so again, I'd like to commend Richard for really integrating not just the strategy of tree coverage, but making sure that we're doing this through a lens for equity across our whole community.
Really quickly, Wydell, Councilmember Kubi have a question?
Oh, Wydell, yes. The top bullet, focus on maintenance, not acceleration. My understanding is we were saying focus on maintenance as well as acceleration. I wouldn't say that we don't want to focus on acceleration. We do have a goal of 25% canopy by 2040, and we're not going to get there if we just focus on maintenance. So I mean, maybe it's just a matter of, maybe I'm reading that too literally, that bullet.
I think what I failed to mention, I apologize that for that council member, Kubi, is that in the past, we've been able to make significant investments and continue to do so. And so the living asset of trees, as you well know, needs the time to actually also grow. And so we don't want to lose the element, as you mentioned before, that if we plant, we still also need to maintain these investments. And so really, maybe the word here should be the balance of maintenance and acceleration.
I agree. Thank you.
Thank you. And so moving to carbon neutrality on the next slide, please. And some of the strategies with carbon neutrality for both city operations as well as the community have intersections. And as you can see on the charts, really, we're looking at areas regarding city facilities and fleet, public transportation and mobility, as well as energy. And so some of the key areas that we would like to focus on and have been focusing on for acceleration is in regards to expanding our streetcar, I'm sorry, I'm moving to the next slide, is in regards to green building policies, such as our IGCC construction codes, creating sustainable facilities, whether through retrofits or also our new buildings, our energy efficiency as we invest in city buildings, converting our city vehicles fleet to electric, continue that investment and work with our departments as we continue to do that, as well as, as you heard earlier, in regards to resilient energy hubs, and that would be in regards to solar and battery storage for our community. And for our our next performance measure that was identified for acceleration is in regards to our transportation system satisfaction. And this particular performance measure is feedback from the actual transit system survey. I'm a little bit different than our community survey. It does, it's conducted every two years and includes both riders and non-riders. And our acceleration strategies in regards to the CIP include expanding the streetcar and bus rapid transit. Also regarding route performance and equity, implementing a 10 to 15 minute frequency pilot program on selected routes, increasing our shade at bus stops, again, intersectionality with our shade canopy, whether it be trees or engineered. And our goal here is to install as a strategy three shelters per year, adding transit lanes, which would push on-time performance and reliability, and also increasing access to the transit system. Next slide, please. So our housing inventory ratio, you'll note that in regards to maintaining this ratio from for a three-person household in affordable workforce and market housing categories, we are actually accelerating in or achieving an affordable and market rate and falling a little bit behind in workforce housing. And as we continue to make investments across the city with our Hometown for All Initiative, we'll be keeping an eye on how these ratios start to interact with each other. Would want to mention that the advancement with the affiliate and our continue our strategies that we similar that we recently had with Food City is a way to advance this measure. Partnering with developers to negotiating affordable housing units is also a key strategy. The acceleration strategies also include contracted properties as well as expanding city-owned properties for both affordable and workforce housing. And thank you for that slide. Our next performance measure for acceleration is our right-of-way landscape maintenance. And this is about really coordinating with roadway and development projects and prioritizing those alongside community satisfaction data. So staff has done a significant amount of effort in looking at community satisfaction as well as how we plan and prioritize projects. And that picture can be seen on the chart here, the left being community satisfaction levels and the right-hand side being for planned projects. And so this becomes a balance in regards to capitalizing on the projects that are planned and making sure that we're leveraging the opportunity to improve our right-of-way landscape there, as well as looking and making sure that we're not missing out on areas where we have lower satisfaction that we need to put a little bit more focus on. In this 2021 community survey, we did see lower satisfaction ratings in the northeast areas of Tempe, and illustrated on the map on the right are the planned projects for the next two years. And an example of this is a focus on the Apache and Alameda character areas, and these include the neighborhoods of Victory Acres, Escalante, and Allegre. On our next slide, we have our data in regards to our traffic delay reduction. And with the Tempe Business Survey in 2017, traffic on city seats, streets prior to pandemic was the highest priority in our business survey. In 2019 and 2021, as we do the survey every two years, it was not number one, but it's still ranked in the top five of priorities for businesses. So there are strategies to address the challenges of growth, construction barricading, lane closures, and special events. And so we have three areas of focus, which include infrastructure, which is in regards to our turn lanes and our bus pullouts. Another acceleration strategy area is in regards to optimizing signal and signal timing through technology, as well as active traffic management and our barricading strategies through our operations division. And so with that, I'd like to thank our department staff for putting together really thoughtful strategies that not only work within their discipline, but also intersect across other disciplines in the city and programs and service areas. but also intersect across other disciplines in the city and programs and service areas. We wish that this was all very linear, but there is a lot of intersections that we try to take into consideration in developing the strategies. So I really appreciate the staff's support and help on that. And also to mayor and council, any questions, I'm happy to help with those. Otherwise, I'll send it back to Mark and Tom. Thank you.
Mayor members of council, that really concludes the presentation. Mark Whitehead and I are here to answer questions. Just a quick shout out to the departments. They understood the limited funding sources that we had and the monumental task to kind of shift things around now that we kind of know the rules. And they really stepped up. And that's why tonight, there's very few of these projects that you see in the red. But with that, mayor, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Really appreciate it. Let me go to Vice Mayor Keating, then Councilmember Navarro.
Thank you, mayor. You know, I don't think I've ever seen a CIP budget that had so many projects funded in it at one time. So I'm going to thank you and your team for whatever you did it, right? Like, I'll never testify against you, however, however you made it happen. I think this whole council really appreciates it. And certainly, what you've chosen to accelerate, I think certainly reflects the desire of the council and the needs of the community. So I think those are projects in areas that are very appropriate to accelerate. I just want to comment on just quick things in the actual CIP that I was pleased to see are, were in green. And most, again, most of them are, so you know, certainly the arterial walls, which I know Councilmember Navarro was very passionate about. I'm glad that those are being funded as well as the resilient energy hubs and microgrids. Because as I recently have joined the Solar Club, and that analysis is very important to me. The Guadalupe Western Canal Crossing, which I believe Councilmember Adams was referencing. I live around there and glad to see that that's being invested in as well. And certainly the broader revitalization, the sidewalks and bike lanes. That's something that that neighbor has been waiting for for a while. So, you know, I'm very pleased with the totality of this and great work to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Keating. Councilmember Navarro?
Thank you, mayor, and thank you for the presentation. I think it took four terms to get to this point where everything was in green. Everything was, I mean, before it's been like, okay, scramble time. So yeah, thank you. I mean, this is outstanding and you guys did a great job. And thank you for the right-of-way walls and landscaping and Whitehead with the presentation. One thing, number 13 opioids, we're still, we're still on track with that. And am I clear on that? If there's any comments on it, it's number 13.
If I could respond, Councilmember Navarro, thank you for that question. The reason I'm virtual tonight is in regards to a wastewater conference that Rose and I were invited to, to highlight Tempe's work in regards to combating opioid use and COVID pandemic with wastewater. And I mentioned that in regards to addressing opioids because we are currently building out the rest of our infrastructure. Thank you to the council for the support with that. And then we will be back with the operating budget on April 21st to talk about the very specific strategies regarding opioids that relate to not only the data that informs us from wastewater, but the other elements of data as well as active strategies, both strategic vision and operational decision-making that we have in place for addressing opioids. It has been a theme between COVID and opioids. That has been the theme here, the conference here from Cincinnati. And so we are on track to come back with the strategy specific to those regarding acceleration. So thank you for that.
Yeah, and thank you. And I just want to say, I mean, on a bigger stage, what you guys have done, Rosa and team, I mean, to get us on track with the wastewater stuff, opioids, has been nothing but outstanding. It is, it has gotten us recognition worldwide, to be honest with you. What we have done, CDC, all the pandemic epidemic, all the studies that we're doing with wastewater initiatives that we started with opioids. And we're going, we're still doing the opioid stuff. But the fact of the treatment, the fact of working with fire and PD on providing services, I can only say that this city is probably the roadmap for other cities to follow. And I can't express it enough, and that's why I mentioned it, and thank you for talking about it, but I can't express it enough how important it is to stay on task with this whole opioid epidemic. And then also with any other epidemic that comes up through our wastewater studies, but also through the coordination and efforts of CARE7 and all the other partnerships that we have within and out the city to help combat opioids. So appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Navarro. Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Yes, thank you, mayor. I think Joel nailed it right because I think the first year I got here, it was not very great. And it's just been a really nice evolution of the budget and where we've come. And also the way you guys are presenting it and the inclusion of all the directors and the stakeholders and just, I think the whole process has just come really a 180. And I'm really proud of the work that you guys continue to do and do for this community. The one thing, I'm really glad to hear what we're doing about the opioids. And thank you, Joel, for really addressing that back in the day because some of those things, those tools that we've been able to use to address opioids, we'll be able to transition into what we did with COVID. So I mean, I think that's just a win-win for everybody. The one thing I just would like to get some more information, doesn't have to be today, is when we talk about like deferred maintenance, I mean, that was a big, big deal. That's kind of got us in a really bad situation with a lot of things when we were talking about deferred maintenance. And it made me think about some of the items are on here. And I kind of connected with Sean just a little bit. And I looked at the tennis, the tennis facility, and I see that it's not on there until like year 24, 2024, which I get, but that was such a big investment for this community. And it is just like a nationwide facility now when it comes to tennis and everything that's happening. Is that the proper policy to ensure that we're not going to get ourselves in a situation where we have deferred maintenance or we don't really have any dollars aligned in case something happens? And maybe we can just talk through that offline a little bit because I just know the pain of having to deal with deferred maintenance and what that does and how that takes away from so many things. But yet, all you're doing is band-aiding a lot of things, and I don't want to band-aid anymore. I want to make sure that we have the dollars available to maintain these investments that we continue to talk about. And you look at that one circle, that little pie, it's not a pie chart, it's a circle chart. I don't know what you call it. But how much we are investing in new things and remodeling things and remaking things. And I just want to ensure that we are associating the right proper dollars to make sure that we are maintaining them to the very fullest. So we can have, like Marilyn mentioned earlier, the quality that we expect. So that would be my two cents. But then I would just again say, you know, thank you guys so very much for what you're doing. It is really great to see so many green items. And I think you've listened to the council. I think you've listened to our community, you've listened to the staff and some of the things that need to be done. And I think this is just accumulation of a great collaboration. So thank you very much for that. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Arredondo Savage. You did the council members. Councilmember QB?
Sure. Thank you. So I wanted to talk about the bus stops. Now, I know that we're not, they're not funded by geo-funding, it's transit funding, right? But I do wonder whether we should consider some geo-funding to help with the bus shelter because currently, I think, Whitehead, you said three a year, but the plan was for 30 a year. But still, we need 400 shaded transit shelters. So dividing with my math, I figured that's 13 years before we get to our goal. And I know we wanted to advance it, which is why the transportation satisfaction category scored so high. And we were previously, we're talking about getting to that target at 2040. So I see that we're getting there maybe 2035, which is definitely an improvement, that's advancement. But I don't know if this is the approval of the other, my other council colleagues, but I would like to see the bus shelter, the shade for bus shelter, whether it's man-made or trees be advanced. And, you know, I think we need to do more than 30 per year. And so I don't know whether we, I should just stop there and see if there's any kind of consensus to ask for more?
Can you comment on that?
Hey, you're in charge. You're finally in charge. Alexander, hey.
Well, I will just say, you know, that's kind of something that we've been talking about in transportation as a region too. And realize that it's something that we can certainly do better. But I think before I go there, I just kind of want to know what that would look like and the impact. So I'm certainly not afraid to talk about it, but I'm not ready to commit to doing it. So maybe if you could just bring us back some thoughts of how that might move things around and what that would look like. Certainly open into just having that discussion.
Vice Mayor, vice mayor, members of council, we can bring that on the 21st and have a discussion about that.
I was gonna say, I think we do need to look at increasing that number. I mean, I think, you know, I've driven by some of these bus stops, ridden my bike by some of the bus stops, and they are, some of them are right in the sun and there is absolutely no shade. And so I would like to see that. So I think that bringing it back for discussion would be great. Thank you. Thank you. I remember, whoa, in 2014, Harry Mitchell taking me on a tour of Tempe and Mesa. I got into trouble for talking about that tour when I was sworn in. We won't go into that mic drop moment, but anyway, sorry, I'm sorry, I don't mean to joke too much, but I wanted just to finish that thought. But I remember driving with Harry and we saw this guy crouched under a bush waiting for, you know, a bus and with no shelter. So, I mean, I'm pleased, it seems like council, there's agreement to bring it back to discuss. And I know it comes out of transit funding right now, and the transit funds are really sorely stressed. But if we could look at more general funding or even CIP funding, whatever way. But I also thought, you know, we do have this urban forestry commitment and we're substantially increasing that. It seems like the urban forestry commitment could be combined with the bus shelter commitment to give us more bang for the buck and more, more trees could be planted. I know it's not all trees, sometimes manufactured shade, but there may be a way to combine those two resources, so.
Yeah, members of the council, just a quick comment on that. Our geo-bond program is based on what the voters approved.
Right.
Currently, that is not part of the authorization we got in 2020. So anything, excuse me, anything we would have to do, you know, we'll bring it back for discussion on the 21st, would have to be included in the November 2024 bond election for geo-bond funding.
Right, or we could look at general fund as well.
Or, yeah.
Or a combination thereof.
We don't have to wait for the voters for that, that's correct.
Okay. And then I know in the Smith Industrial Innovation Hub, we are talking about advancing the bike lane project.
Ooh, I'd have to, I'd have to turn to staff for that one.
It looked like it was $100,000. Is that the amount that's needed to advance that from our? There's a cost share involved. I know that cul-de-sac is contributing, but we are, we are advancing that in the CIP?
We're advancing it in the CIP. It's 5.1 million in over two years. About 3.1 million in this upcoming fiscal year, and then the remaining 1.9 in the year after that. And I see Marilyn's making her way slowly up here.
Mayor, members, council, the $100,000 that you're referring to, I think Jill was able to work. You're referring to a contribution that was offered by a developer. You know, Jill's working with that developer and she also was able to identify some funds that were remaining from the previous study. And so I think she's worked all of that, the funding stuff out. But we can get back to you with respect to the developer contribution and where we're at with that.
Okie doke, thank you. And then let's see, there's also, I mean, looking at green infrastructure, we're putting it off another year, starting it in 23, 24. And I know there's opportunities for sort of cross-department budget sharing because you talked about the Fillmore, the Fillmore infrastructure project. And that may be too large, I'm understanding, to be a green infrastructure project. But is there a possibility of looking, if we're going to advance the Fillmore project, have a green infrastructure element?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember QB. The Fillmore problem, even the frequent rainfall events cause problems there. The, so you can imagine what a large rainfall event does. So that what the current concept is, is for large storm drain under the street that would manage large flows. That doesn't mean that we can't also during that project, add some green infrastructure elements at street level that would address and make use of those smaller, more frequent rainfall events. So yeah, I think we can combine the two.
And would it also be accurate to say with the landscape, the median landscape projects, that they could also involve green infrastructure as well?
Yes, it certainly could. And we will look at how much right-of-way we have and what the traffic volumes are. So yeah, we'll do that whole analysis.
And I know that staff is very keen on green infrastructure and the possibilities. And I know with the infrastructure bill that passed, the bipartisan infrastructure bill, there's going to be a lot of investment in green infrastructure and even a couple of, five centers of excellence for stormwater control innovation. It's my hope that ASU might apply to be one of those centers. And I think Tempe would be perfectly placed to be a partner. But this whole, this brings up the topic, when I think about green infrastructure, I think about the federal funding that may or may not be coming in, that we need to be ready. So the more projects that we do on the ground will demonstrate that we have the capability to have these shovel-ready projects and be a really good partner for one of these centers. And it brings to mind also, this relates not so much to CIP, but when we're talking about general fund, that to get grant, to get funding, so we have someone who can help with those applications and those grant applications. To have a grant developer is so important and so crucial because there's going to be a lot of opportunities in the next couple of years. And we need, I mean, we are so good at getting grant funding, I realize that. And Robert Yabis is my personal hero for all the money he's brought into the city. But we're going to see a great influx, like related to stormwater. And I think this is a great opportunity and we have to be ready for that.
I couldn't agree more. Thank you for those comments.
And let's see, I guess that's it for now, Mr. Mayor.
Sounds good. Thank you, Councilmember QB. Councilmember Navarro?
We're good.
Councilmember Garland?
I think mine will just be really quick. I like in here, I like how it's easier without the yellow coating in there. I appreciate that so much. I do like the Vision Zero infrastructure that you have listed in here already and the resiliency hubs and the green infrastructure that you just talked about. I would, I'm glad to hear that we still have the funding for the Family Advocacy Center. And so I'm okay with it being in the red as long as we are going to still continue right now to make sure that we still have that facility going so that we can start caring for the people in our community. So thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Any other council members, any other comments or questions? Just, oh, yes, Councilmember Adams?
This is a great, great job you guys did on the CIP. So congratulations, best one I've ever seen. So there you go. That's been a long time.
I just had two quick things. You know, one was just with regard to road maintenance and, you know, an alley maintenance, things of that nature. But I guess I wanted to say, you know, thank you to Vice Mayor Keating and Councilmember Arredondo Savage for taking that up in your committee to talk about kind of the concept of, we talked a lot about some of the downtown improvements, but also talking about kind of doing a refresh on the rest of the city when it comes to our arterial streets and collector streets and, you know, pretty much all of the things that we get a lot of emails about from people talking about our pavement quality index, or PQI for short. There's a lot of conversation about, hey, you know, we love a lot of the work that the council's doing and the city's doing, but we want to make sure that our roads, kind of like, you know, Councilmember Arredondo Savage talked about, that from a deferred maintenance standpoint, we are really keeping up with what their expectations are when it comes to, I think about, you know, Warner Road and Elliott Road and McClintock and rural. And just, you know, people seeing those projects beginning to get kind of done. I think people will be very, very happy about that. And I agree, it's partially, there's some of this work that we're clearly already doing. You know, so I'm in favor of definitely accelerating some of that work, but also making sure that we are kind of appropriately marketing that work because there are a lot of things that frankly go on in the city that we don't, that a lot of folks just don't see every day. And it's because sometimes, you know, all of us, but especially our staff are so busy working and getting this stuff done and preparing this kind of fantastic presentation that we don't always have time to go out there and toot our own horn about the work that we're doing. And so I would love to see us do that work, you know, going forward to continue doing a lot of that maintenance that we always do and doing the refreshed Tempe effort, but also making sure that we are kind of marketing and branding it so people, so it's kind of in people's faces. And people go, oh, my gosh, I see exactly what's going on. And so I think that whatever we can do on that front is great. And I appreciate, once again, Vice Mayor Keating and Councilmember Arredondo Savage for taking that up. The only other thing I was going to ask was the kind of a follow-up to a question that Councilmember QB asked regarding the cul-de-sac, you know, issue when it came to the Smith Innovation Hub and the funding. I guess it's probably more of a Marilyn question, I guess. I just wanted to make sure that like, that when we talk, one of the biggest things that I know they talked about, and they were willing, unlike a lot of folks, to kick in money to actually support the kind of creation of additional protected and buffered bike lanes to ensure the safety of the people who are actually going to be riding, living at that development. And of course, for those watching at home, the cul-de-sac development is a place where you actually have to sign something saying that you will not have a car if you're going to live there. And Councilmember Garland, I know, talked earlier about the notion of getting more protected and buffered bike lanes. So my concern is just making sure that that is a really revolutionary project. And I think that they would probably do others, not just in Tempe, but throughout the entire valley and throughout the country. And I want to make sure that it's successful. But I want to, but my concern, and I know I've said this a few times before, is if for whatever reason, we don't go through with completing that entire project and really adding that kind of protected bike lane to the area, if someone gets hit on a bike, God forbid, while they're riding to Tempe Marketplace or riding to work, going to visit a friend or going somewhere, I worry that, you know, that not just the, I worry for the safety of the people who are living over there, but I also worry about, you know, the kind of PR, quite honestly, that that creates, which is but I also worry about, you know, the kind of PR, quite honestly, that that creates, which is, well, this isn't really a thing and this was, and this was, this is a fad, it's not real. We all know that it's not a fad. We know that things are beginning to move in that direction where people are riding their bikes, they're walking more, they're taking public transportation and doing all types of things other than using single-use automobiles. But I want to, but I'm really, really, I, I just need to make sure that that project is going forward in its full kind of 100% capacity, as the council's talked about before, with that kind of protected bike lane to truly ensure the safety of the people who are living at that development. So that's my, I just wanted, I guess I probably should ask Maryland of that question just to make sure.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, the project is moving forward and I'm sitting over here thinking that maybe what we should do is provide council with a Friday packet item or some kind of an update with respect to where we're at. Jill, the team has kept me posted via email, so things are moving. We just have been remiss, I suppose, in letting council know where we're at.
Okay, no, that sounds good. Thank you, appreciate that. Anything else, council or? Okay, sounds good. Thank you so much, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have item 3E, 2002 Water, Wastewater and Stormwater Rate Study.
Yeah, Mayor, Members of the Council, Tom Dunson, interim deputy city manager. And I'm joined here, pleased to introduce Tara Ford, the interim municipal utilities director. Tonight, we're going to talk about the process of the 2022 Water, Wastewater and Stormwater Rate Study, that's a mouthful, that we are now kicking off. This is a long process. It's a, it's a several-month process and any sort of rate impacts won't be felt until calendar 23. But, but tonight, we're going to just review the process with you and any feedback that, that council has on, on the process, you know, just let us know. This should be a pretty quick presentation. So, next slide, please.
So the rate study, it aligns with and supports council priorities and performance measures by delivering safe, reliable drinking water, effectively operating and maintaining the water, sewer and stormwater infrastructure and managing a robust water resources portfolio and an innovative, sustainable and cutting-edge conservation and efficiency program. And this is all in order to provide the highest quality of customer service to our residents and to ensure public health and safety. Next slide, please.
So a little bit on the rate study process. As you know, the water and wastewater operations are maintained in a separate, what we call is an enterprise fund. An enterprise fund is self-supporting. No taxes go into this fund. The way that the, the water operations and the sewer operations work is customers that use these services are billed through their utility bills. And again, it's self-supporting. Any funds that are in this self-supporting enterprise fund, stay there. There's an extensive planning process on how much fund balance is in there, how much we can utilize and that is all taken into consideration in this rate study process. So just a couple of things. It starts with identifying the revenue requirements and that's a real fancy way of determining or saying, we need to determine what is the cost of delivering these services. And then based on the costs, it has, it requires so much revenue to be able to operate these systems. Once we understand the revenue requirements, then we go to cost allocation. Cost allocation is really what segment of our, of our customers need to be paying for what? And it's a, it's a very complicated process. We have a, a firm, Stan Tech Consulting, that helps us through this process and they're able to identify, they, they do these, that's, this is what they do for a living. And they're able to kind of guide us through to say, what's the equitable way to distribute costs to these, each of these customer classes? Finally, we do rate design. What is the proper rate that we want to charge? And then lastly, is our, our, to communicate the impacts. And I can tell you, we have a very robust public input process and it's one of the reasons that it takes this long. We've got several public meetings actually coming up now to explain the, the fact that we're kicking off this process. Next slide. So a new concept I wanted to, to let you know that we're introducing in this year's rate study and that is, pardon me, stormwater management. Currently, the stormwater capital is paid for by geo bonds. Voters go out, we put it in front of the voters, they approve it. That's as part of the stormwater program. The management of the stormwater program happens in municipal utilities. It's an operating cost. One of the things we're going to look at this year is do we want to peel out those costs and determine whether or not we, how we allocate the costs of that? Do we allocate it differently than we allocate water costs? It's very simple, is the rate payers are already paying for these stormwater management services. What we're doing is saying, peeling it out and saying, is the right customer class paying for the right costs? It's just a little bit granular, a little bit more of a granular process. We won't do anything until we bring it back to council, bring the options back to council to see if we want to go forward with this. I can tell you, other valley cities do this. A lot of it, I believe City of Phoenix calls it an environmental fee. There's, there's a couple of naming conventions that they use, but it's, it's very common industry practice to do that. So we're going to go through that exercise. That's not to say that we're going to, January 1st, you're now going to have a new charge on there, but your, your water charge is going down. We're just going to bring it back to council for you to be able to look at that and evaluate whether or not we go forward. So, next slide. Just real quick, you can see Tempe in the orange. We continue to be at the bottom of our cost of water and wastewater services and in both the average residential customer and also large volume residential customers. Next slide.
So through the process, like Thomas said, we've developed a timeline of events for the rate study that include many public outreach events. We've already started, municipal utilities has started to collaborate with various departments throughout the city in order to collect data and maximize public outreach. We've all also been working with our consultant Stan Tech and you'll be hearing a lot from them. They'll be presenting to the community as well as here at council. So we've started that process and then all of these activities, these efforts will allow staff to, to make informed decisions while executing this study. So through this timeline, you can see that in the spring and summer, we'll be doing presentations, public meetings and public comment surveys. Then in early fall, we'll provide the results and recommendations of the study to council. In late fall, council will be asked to consider adoption of any proposed adjustments. And then if that's adopted by council, the new rates will become effective January 2023. Next slide, please.
And with that, again, we're looking for any feedback you may have on the process. We're clearly not into the rate study at this point. This just really kicks it off. And, but if council has any comment for staff to take back on the process, we'd be happy to hear it. So, Mayor.
Sounds good. Thank you. Any council members, any comments or questions on the side? Councilmember Adams?
I really appreciate you putting in that, where Tempe falls as far as the water fees and that, that we're actually at the, almost the very bottom of what we charge for water fees. So thanks for putting that out. Appreciate it.
Yes, Councilmember Arredondo Savage.
I noticed that sentence, in fact, I made a comment to the vice mayor about the benchmark utility rates. And I guess we got to kind of be careful who we're comparing ourselves to because I don't really think we, our competition is Goodyear in that sense. I don't, I mean, I think that you're talking the West Valley versus the East Valley, so I certainly do appreciate like having those East Valleys and Scottsdale and, and I don't see Phoenix in there. Oh yeah, they are up there at the top. But anyway, I just thought that was kind of funny. But, so keep them in there because it makes us look really good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arredondo Savage. Anyone else? Comments, questions? Councilmember QB?
Thanks, Tom. I mean, you gave us an opportunity to talk about, when you think about green, street and stormwater infrastructure and, and stormwater infrastructure, there's an opportunity to really be creative here and there's so many tie-ins with urban forestry and, and resilience and urban cooling and, and I'm really interested in the discussion that we're going to have because I think there's an opportunity to, to make the costs, not to be so beholden on the geo bonds, but to look at a utility that encompasses green infrastructure planning. And because we've seen how it crosses many sort of departments, but it needs to be, it needs to have some sort of central planning, some central management. And I think in the, in the supplemental, we're looking at, at a plan, right, to look at stormwater and how we assess that and urban cooling and, and urban cooling, possibly urban cooling utility, stormwater utility.
Yeah, Mayor, Members of the Council, Braden Kaye is very aware of what we're doing here and he is, he is appreciative and excited.
Great, I'm excited to hear the developments. Thanks.
Sounds good. Thank you, Councilmember QB. Anyone else? Additional comments? All right, wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, next up is item number four, Call to the Audience. Then, this is for Committee of the Whole Items. There are no items ready for City Council Direction. And I don't think, Carla, we have any more items here for Call to the Audience?
No public input.
Okay, sounds good. All right, so once again, next up, item number five, Committee of the Whole Items. Five A items ready for City Council Direction or Status Update, there are none. Would any council member like to give an update providing on your following council committees, whether human services and community safety, workforce readiness and economic vitality or sustainable and livable communities? Councilmember Garland?
I just want to say that we are not having a meeting this month and I'm not sure if the other committees are also. Darn it, making me look bad. Just one lady, our committee is not having a meeting this month. What about your committee, ma'am?
Yes, Vice Mayor Keating?
Mayor, my committee is having a meeting on Monday.
Ouch, it's got cold, it's got cold in here very quickly. Any other updates from council and their council committees? All right, hearing none. The next item on the agenda is Future Agenda Items. Councilmembers may request that an item be added to a future issue review session. In accordance with the open meeting law, there should be no discussion on the item other than to clarify the request. So that, I'm going to look to council members, any future agenda items, any council members want to add? Ooh.
Mayor, my committee is not having a meeting on Monday.
Ooh, ooh, that's probably getting fact-checked in live time, so.
A lot of fact rates that mostly false. I will talk to Robin on Monday.
Ooh, I'll let you two have that conversation privately. Uh, Councilmember, uh, Councilmember QB?
Yeah, I know we have a pretty heavy schedule coming up and not that many work studies, but I do want to talk about a couple of issues. We have the opportunity always to look at our election system and reform it and improve it. We, we don't really have any council committee group that, council committee that fits into, so it's appropriate, I think, to bring it as issue review. But I, I was startled and in a little bit troubled by the, not the outcome of the election. We have fine council members that are elected, congratulations, but we had a 21% turnout. And while it's not wildly low, it is historically low. When you look at 2014, it was 25%. 2016, 25%, hmm, and then November 2018, 75%. That was for ballot initiatives and bonds. So, in, in November 2018, it was 69%. That was ballot initiatives. 2020, 31%. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Created such excitement in the populace that we got a better turnout. And then, you know, 21% historically low. And, and almost, it's interesting, there were over 8,000 undervotes, which means a lot of people are what is called single-shooting or double-shooting, not necessarily using all of their three votes. So I would like to just not, not propose for discussion tonight, but just have, probably Carla, maybe you need to have some helpers there, come back and look at the possibility of a November election for City Council in the future. We are, I think we're the only city in Maricopa County that has the elections in March. So I'd be interested in looking at that and getting council consensus to look at that. And then for the undervote issue, I would be very interested and point of fact, I'm on the state board for ranked choice voting. But look at the possibility of ranked choice voting, which would allow a voter to express their preferences, first choice, second choice, third choice, down the line. And it's a more accurate representation of the voter's intent, the voter's wishes. And that would also mean that the election would be just a primary, which is, has been. And, you know, in fact, we've had primary slash general elections. We haven't since 2012, I believe, had a general election. And so I would, if there's, if, to entertain this idea, see if there's any council consensus to have an IRS on these two. There would have to be referrals to the ballot, one on turning, putting the elections into November and then the second would be looking at ranked choice voting and its possibilities for Tempe.
Sounds good. Thank you, Councilmember QB. Oh, sorry.
So I guess I would need to find consensus to just have, again, we're not talking about deciding this today, but just having staff come back and say what the options are and looking actually at the other cities. What, what do other cities do? Because I think we're the only city in, in Maricopa County that has March elections and turnout is reflected in that.
Sounds good. Councilmember Arredondo Savage and Councilmember Adams?
Sure, no problem. And I, I appreciate Councilmember QB bringing that up and, and I actually was, I'm a council member that did go through the November election with Councilmember QB and.
It's August.
Yeah, right, exactly. So, what I would say is, is I don't want to change the way it is. I, I like the idea that it's local, it's about us. We get to be able to tell our story. We don't get lost in politics. It doesn't become divisive. It comes, it is about keeping Tempe first and putting Tempe first. So, you know, I guess my, my thought process is I'm, I'm probably not going to change my mind. I understand and I don't want to have Carla go and do all that work and digging. And I just want to be upfront and honest and say, I like the way the system is. I think it keeps it a lot more local. I think it keeps it about Tempe and it doesn't get lost in politics. Thank you, Mayor.
Sounds good. Thank you. Councilmember Adams?
Yes, I completely concur with what Councilmember QB is proposing. I think it's a great idea. Since I was the one that was in the last election, I mean, that, the turnout was really low and I think putting on the November, August and November schedule would be a lot more effective to promoting our democracy and getting people out to vote, because we want people to vote. And 21% is just, it's, it's really low. So I would like to see that move forward.
Sounds good. Thank you. Other council members? Comments, questions or consensus? Councilmember Garland?
I'm, I would, I missed part of that, so I'm sorry. So this is just to have a discussion or have some information brought back to us, right?
Yes, on, on two items. The first item would be whether or not to move elections to November and then the second one would be to consider, at least having Carla do some research on ranked choice voting and present that as an option to the council.
Okay.
So I guess the first one we were just talking about right now so far is just the November portion.
Okay, so I was, I had talked about there, thought about this earlier today, but I was doing a little bit of research before this. And I'm not, I'm not sure if I would be interested at all in the rate, in the rate, the choice, right? Ranked choice voting is not something that I would be interested in, but I'm, I mean, changing the date. I am open to listening to information that comes, but I do kind of like the March. I like that we're, that we're different and I had thought about this also about the, you know, then if you're going into November, then how do you get the, how do you get attention to, to the city of, the city election? People that are running for office and more information about them when you've got, also got the national and the state and things like that. So anyway, I, I would be open to listening, but I'm, I'm not sure if I would support it.
Sounds good. Okay, other council members?
Been through it before, ranked choice, I wouldn't do in November. I like how our elections are in March. But if there's a discussion, there's a discussion.
Thank you, Councilmember Bravar. Just keeping some notes. Yes, Vice Mayor Keating?
Yeah, I kind of align with what Councilmember Bravar was saying. You know, I, I think that ranked choice would most likely just make it easier for incumbents to get reelected and I also like that it's in March because it does divorce us from the partisan ballot and the kind of, I like to see that. You know, Tempe is, is the front and center of that election and I understand the point that, you know, maybe only 21% of the people vote, but those are 21% of the people who are actually paying attention to the city, you know, and the city stuff isn't as sexy as the federal and state stuff, but it's the people that are really kind of paying attention, right? It's people that care enough to participate in our system. Let's not forget, every voter in the city of Tempe gets mailed a ballot, so they have every opportunity to vote. So I'm not for any changes in our current election system. Thank you.
Okay, I've got comments and I've got to go back to a couple of people to get comments on ranked choice especially though. In terms of the November, I'm probably very much in Councilmember Garland's camp with this. I mean, I'm definitely open to getting information back to see, you know, what that would actually entail. I'm not sure if I would support it or not once getting that information, but at least, but I don't have any problem with Carla spending a couple of hours and compiling some information about what other cities and towns are doing around us and seeing what the turnout looks like in those situations, if that's turned the elections more partisan, if the turnout is higher, lower, or just about the same. So I'm, I'm in favor of at least getting the information, but I'm definitely not committing which way I would vote. As people have talked about, the elections in the city of Tempe have been on a March-May cycle for a long time and I definitely can appreciate the focus that they have had on city elections and us not.
on city elections and us not getting dragged into national politics, which is sort of what can happen if you're probably on an August or November cycle. But at the same time, I don't have any concern about at least, at least getting the information and then making a decision at that point. The ranked choice voting, I actually feel the same way. I'm happy to get the information. Not exactly sure if that would, if I would support it at the end of the day, but I know it's something that, you know, I've talked to many people in the city of Tempe about for a number of years, including the League of Women Voters, and I know they've talked about that as an option. So once again, I'm comfortable getting the information, but I would, I would reserve my right to make a final decision upon reading that information and analyzing it, so. Yes?
And I believe, Andrew, you could maybe remind us, I think there was some research done on this eight years ago or so, it was before I was on council, but it could be supplemented perhaps if council agrees just to look at ranked choice voting. Wasn't there some research?
It was more than eight years ago. I remember, I think it was 2008. Possibly 2009, around there. We may have supplemented it since then, looked at it. I don't remember. Carla shaking her head.
I'd done some research probably about a year and a half ago, and part of the problem is legislature has not approved that as a form of voting and we would have to run our own elections. So there's some cost obviously involved with that.
And that can be part of what we look at.
But that can be part of the presentation, absolutely. That'd be part of the information. But I'll do an update on the research I did a year and a half ago to see if there have been any changes or any movement.
So here's what, here's what, I wanted to just make sure that I'm really clear, I was sort of taking notes. And so there is consensus to go forward with getting the information about moving the election to November. So I think we can go back and collect that information. However, there's not consensus based on what I've heard from people up here and some of the conversations I'm having to do the ranked choice. I've got four people who've said they don't want to support going forward with that, so I wouldn't want to ask you to spend time on that if there's not consensus to go forward with that. So there is consensus to get the information on the November election, but not consensus